Sellers can catch up if she needs to. What was that, Sharon?
Nate, one second. I just want to make sure the audio is fine.
Okay. Oh, here's Commissioner Sellers. Sounds good. Whoop, that was weird. What's going on here? That's better. All right. Figuring out the tone. All right. Welcome everybody to the Lawrence City Commission, the Tuesday, November 19th, Lawrence City Commission. And to start us off, I think we have an executive session and I think that's where we'll begin.
Move to recess in the executive session for approximately 30 minutes to discuss a personnel matter involving a city employee, pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception KSA 75-4319B1. The justification for the executive session is to protect employee privacy. The City Commission will resume at its regular meeting in the City Commission Room at 5:32 PM after the executive session is concluded.
All right, do we have a first? Do we have a second?
Motion.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Pass this five zero. Thank you.
Um.
Reasonable. Reasonable weather too.
We're we're going to do this real quick and then after. Um, we have returned from we have returned from executive session and have nothing to report. Uh, all right, meeting will consume or resume at five forty five. Thank you all. All right.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, everyone, welcome back to the November 19th Lawrence City Commission. And we've already done item A, we'll go to item B. But before that, I would like to have Sheri go ahead and give us rundown of the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Please silence your cell phones to minimize distractions during the meeting. When the mayor calls for public comment, please approach the podium to indicate you wish to speak. Virtual participants should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. When prompted, select join as panelist. There will be a brief delay as your role changes. Once your name is called, please unmute and turn on your camera to provide your comments. Please state your name and zip code before speaking. The city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute participants. All comments will be limited to three minutes. The primary format for accessing or participating in this meeting is in person at City Hall. Virtual access to view or participate in the meeting cannot be guaranteed. The chat function will not be monitored. If you have any trouble, the meeting can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Sheri. All right, I'll get it started with item B. Approve the agenda. The city commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved five to zero. Item C, recognition proclamation and presentation. The first one up is proclaim the month of November 2024 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month. And I believe we have Sarah Randolph. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners, Mayor, city staff. Thank you so much for doing this. The sixth year in a row, I am representing the families, the residents, and my staff who see firsthand the devastating effects of Alzheimer's, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Whereas Alzheimer's is a disease that is accompanied by symptoms of memory loss called dementia. Nearly six million adults in the United States suffer from Alzheimer's disease, and a new sufferer is diagnosed every seven seconds. And whereas the dementia-related symptoms that accompany diseases such as Alzheimer's may include loss of mental function in areas such as the language, memory, visual, spatial abilities, and judgment, there is no existing cure for Alzheimer's. But promising studies are being led by researchers in our region. And whereas Bridge Haven Memory Care Residents and families advocate for more awareness, better treatments, and for a cure. Now therefore, I, Bart Littlejohn, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do proclaim the month of November 2024 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to extend their support for those struggling with Alzheimer's and other dementia-related illnesses. Thank you. All right. The next one is proclaim the month of November 2024 as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month. And it looks like Kerry Cobb and Dale Wheeler. All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and members. I'm Misty Bosch Hastings, Director of the Homeless Solutions Division for the City of Lawrence. Honored to be here tonight to accept this important proclamation declaring November 2024 as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month in Lawrence. This proclamation is more than a formal recognition. It's a reaffirmation of our collective commitment to addressing the pressing issues of hunger and homelessness that affect so many of our neighbors. It represents our community's dedication to fostering awareness, understanding, and most importantly, action toward alleviating the struggles faced by those without adequate food or housing. By embracing this month of awareness, we are joining forces with organizations and individuals nationwide to shine a light on the root causes of these challenges. Factors like shortage of affordable housing, economic instability, unemployment, and barriers to essential services. This proclamation encourages not only to acknowledge these issues, but engage actively in creating solutions. I'd like to recognize a few organizations that feed our community members, such as Sunrise Project, Ballard, Just Food Link, Harvesters Jack's Project, Food Not Bombs, and countless community volunteers. Their efforts ensure that those facing food insecurities are met with compassion and nourishment. I also want to acknowledge our emergency shelter providers, including Lawrence Community Shelter, as well as other organizations diligently working to house our neighbors, such as Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority and Family Promise. These organizations embody the spirit of collaboration and dedication needed to make a real difference in people's lives. Tonight, I want to give a special recognition to one local agency, organization, and extraordinary individual who embodies both missions of feeding and sheltering our community members. John Crable of the First United Methodist Church has for many years provided warm meals through Jubilee Cafe and a safe place for those in need during harsh winter months. While John couldn't be here this evening, I am thrilled to welcome Kerry Cobb and Dale Wheeler, who are instrumental in the operation of Jubilee Cafe and Winter Emergency Shelter Overflow to accept this proclamation on his behalf. John, Kerry, Dale, and the First United Methodist Church represent the best of our community's values: compassion, service, and unwavering commitment. Thank you, guys, for your tireless work and for demonstrating how a community can come together to care for its most vulnerable members.
Okay, thank you. Would you guys like to say anything?
Well, on behalf of John and Jubilee that Kerry and I work with, we thank you very much for this.
Thank you. And I'm sorry I left you out, Misty. Whereas the National Coalition for Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness, sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, observed annually the week before Thanksgiving, which will be held from November 17th through 23rd, 2024. And whereas the purpose of this proclamation is to raise awareness of the factors contributing to hunger and homelessness, and such as the shortage of affordable housing in Lawrence, economic instability, unemployment, mental health challenges, and barrier to accessing necessary services and to remote service or support for local service providers, and encourage participation in community service activities. And whereas while significant progress has been made to reduce homelessness through collaborative initiatives and city programs, the recent approval of a half-cent tax increase demonstrates the community's commitment to addressing these challenges. Continued collective effort and support remain essential to build upon this momentum, sustain progress, and achieve long-term solutions. And whereas the City of Lawrence acknowledges and appreciates the dedication of volunteers, service providers, and community organizations whose efforts contribute significantly to fostering a supportive and inclusive community that addresses hunger and homelessness. And whereas people expressing unsheltered homelessness and food insecurity face significant risk to their physical and mental health, the lack of stable housing and consistent access to nutritious food exacerbates these risks, leading to poor health outcomes and diminished quality of life. Ensuring connections to permanent housing and reliable food sources must remain central to our community's efforts, fostering dignity, safety, and well-being for all of our residents. Now therefore, I, Bart Littlejohn, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2024 as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month, and urge everyone to support efforts to end hunger and homelessness in our community. Thank you all. All right. Our third one is proclaim November 30th, 2024, a Small Business Saturday. And it looks like Andrew Holt.
Andrew Holt, Executive Director of Downtown Lawrence, Inc. First of all, I want to say that I'm honored to be able to receive this proclamation for the entire small business community. We really appreciate it. I'd like to just say a few words on the importance of Small Business Saturday and small businesses. Obviously, small businesses provide a tremendous amount of economic strength for our community. They are a big part of the economic backbone. They also provide a tremendous quality of life experience, places to go, places to enjoy, our community, our identity. And so when we look at them, they are local restaurants, they're local retail shops, they're local service providers, they are business people, they are building owners. Most of all, they're our neighbors. They are our community members, the community of Lawrence. And there's such a personal touch with small business owners. So in this day and age, we can click, we can scroll and scroll, and we can push buttons. But I prefer to go into a bookstore where I can smell the books, I can talk with the owner, and pet a cat, or even a dog. I prefer going to local restaurants that have local food, fresh food, and I might see my favorite server and ask them how they're doing in school. I prefer going to an independent local pharmacy, which we have now downtown, which is terrific, where they make the extra call to make sure you get the refill, where they make the extra call to see if they can sync everything, so you don't have to come in so many times. These are just part of the reasons that small businesses are so important. And lastly, I'd like to thank the community and the city for their support of small businesses. This community truly loves the small businesses and goes out of its way to support it, and it is noticed and it is appreciated. The city is a great partner. We appreciate all the support of the holiday festivities, the lights, the personnel. We appreciate the landscaping downtown. It's reliable, it's done well. We appreciate your support of DLI. So with that, we say thank you to the community, thank you to the city, and Small Business Saturday is a day to celebrate our small businesses and our community. And we hope to see you all out supporting the businesses and wish you a very happy Small Business Saturday.
Thank you. Whereas the City of Lawrence celebrates the essential role that small businesses play in fostering a vibrant and sustainable economy, providing quality jobs, services, and unique offerings that contribute to the health of our community. And whereas Lawrence's local small businesses, most owned by our friends and neighbors, enrich the community with their individuality, making Lawrence a place where all can feel at home and share in the joy of supporting local year-round. And whereas Downtown Lawrence Incorporated participates in a nationally-recognized Small Business Saturday on Saturday, November 30th, inviting residents and visitors alike to prioritize local shops and services as a central part of their holiday shopping traditions. And whereas the City of Lawrence and Downtown Lawrence Incorporated are committed to creating a safe, lively, and welcoming downtown environment that enhances the holiday shopping and an entertainment season for all to enjoy. Now therefore, I, Bart Littlejohn, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday. Thank you. All right. All right. That'll move us on to item D. I'll go ahead and let anyone that wants to go ahead and leave before we could jump into consent. Leave. Okay. Item D, item consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and approved by one motion. Members of the governing body may remove items for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public may remove items identified as quasi-judicial for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments. All right. Would any of the commission like to remove an item?
Yeah, we'd like to move D for E.
Okay. Any other items? Okay. All right. I'll extend it to the public. Would any of the public like to remove any of the quasi-judicial items? I believe we have two. Okay. D 7A, is that what you're saying? Okay. Doesn't look like there are any more. Sheri, any on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
Okay, bringing it back to us.
Move for approval of the consent agenda with the exception of D 4E and D 7A.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. None opposed? Aye. Five to zero. All right. Okay, the items selected for removal. I'll start first with D for E. And Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, a couple of members of the community wanted me to pull this off the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody in particular that would want to start off the conversation? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Holly Krebs. Our pool coalition greatly appreciates your decision to pursue a renovation of our outdoor pool that maintains our open swim space and our 50-meter lap lanes. We believe this reflects our community's true desires for a pool renovation, and we thank you very much for your decision on October 15th. Unfortunately, our coalition's campaign arose because throughout this planning process, the public and the commission were misinformed and public opinion was ignored. Our petition's 1,764 signatures, our supporters' 75 letters, and our research into the extensive flaws in the public engagement process all indicated that the development process did not reflect a public opinion. In spite of this, Parks and Rec Director Louise Ruiz concluded the October 15th meeting by stating, "We have not ignored public opinion in any way." This response continued the pattern of misinformation and dismissal of public opinion that we observed throughout the pool renovation process, which makes us concerned that our citizens' opinions may continue to be dismissed in the next steps of this process. For this reason, our coalition requests that you appoint a citizen oversight committee for the remainder of this project. And 42 citizens, including six children, have written to you in the last four days to make this same request. We believe that a citizen committee that continually reviews and advises on this project will ensure better outcomes. And we also believe this committee is needed to hold city staff and its consultants accountable for creating a pool renovation that reflects, rather than ignores, our community's feedback. To substantiate our claims that public opinion was ignored, I documented all of my research about the omissions and errors in this project's public engagement process. I've shared this research with the commission, and our coalition will present some of its highlights tonight. We believe this information justifies the need for this citizen oversight committee. I also believe it is important for the commission and our community to know how we were misled through this process. And I hope that bringing this information to light can improve the planning process for both this project and other city projects. The city's first commitment to its citizens in its strategic plan is community engagement. And this process is meant to, quote, "drive action and build trust in city government," end quote. It erodes trust with our citizens when city staff dismisses citizen input and misinforms city commission and the Lawrence citizens. We believe that active collaboration with the citizen committee will hold staff and its consultants accountable, generate the best pool renovation possible, and help rebuild trusting relationships between our city staff, citizens, and our city commission. We also support the city's communications and community relations department leading all public engagement for the remainder of this project, rather than rehiring the previous public engagement consultants. We believe the city department knows our community more intimately and may be better able to balance citizens' interests with the cities. We look forward to rebuilding trust within.
Thank you.
engagement process. They claimed this during the public and focus group meetings, in their report for the August 13th commission meeting, and during Mr. Ruiz's presentation for that meeting when he overtly said that the preferred option has come up through that public engagement process. In actuality, the preferred design option was not reflective of the public engagement process. Through this process, our community consistently requested open water for recreational swimming and retaining our 50-meter lap lanes. Parks and Rec, municipal services, and their consultants ignored this extensive community feedback and only put forth design concepts that dramatically reduced the size of our pool and its open swim space. These departments and their consultants also failed to fully and accurately share the community's input with the city commission, which made it appear as though the preferred design concept they presented was desired by our community. Using the International Association of Public Participation Standards, we believe the city did not comply with these standards and their code of ethics. These standards state that public participation includes the promise that the public's contribution will influence the decision. The code of ethics for these standards also commits its practitioners to incorporate the interests and concerns of all affected stakeholders, undertake and encourage actions that build trust and credibility for the process, encourage the disclosure of all information relevant to the public's understanding and evaluation of a decision, and ensure that stakeholders have the opportunity to influence decisions. This process did not meet these standards for the following reasons. Our community provided 5,749 comments in the opinion surveys, which was the primary way citizens could express their opinions about the pool renovation project. Viero, the public engagement consultants, did not even bring these survey comments to the commission's attention at any point in the planning process. Viero did not analyze these 5,749 comments and share that information with the commission or the public during the planning process. But two months after the preferred concept was approved, the Parks and Rec Department finally presented the analysis of comments from two of the 18 questions that allowed comments. These results resoundingly show that our community requested a larger facility in their survey comments. Parks and Rec presented the square footage of the new and old pool to the city commission and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, but they withheld this relevant information from the public throughout the entire public engagement process. So our citizens provided all of our feedback about this project.
Hi, Mandy, I'm sorry about that.
Thanks. Thank you.
Good evening. This is a continuation of the reasons we believe city staff and its consultants did not comply with the International Association of Public Participation's Code of Ethics. 1,651 people filled out the first opinion survey, but the city commission only received the accurate results from this survey's multiple-choice questions once, in one slide near the end of their June 4 meeting. And Viero's final report inaccurately reported the results from a meeting attended by 13 people instead of the survey results from 1,651 people. The feedback from this first opinion survey was supposed to direct the renovation proposals, but our commission only saw this information for 62 seconds. The three opinion surveys questioned biased results by only giving people the option of voting for open swim space in one out of 25 questions, while they allowed people to vote for a lazy river in five out of 25 questions. Throughout the planning process, the Parks and Recreation Department told our community that it would be too expensive to retain our open water space, but they had not actually analyzed these costs. And when these costs were finally estimated, after the preferred concept had been approved, our community discovered that repairing our current pool would cost less than the preferred concept. The engineering consultants do not appear to have shared with the city commission and the public that the location of stormwater pipes may be the cause of the settling and cracking happening to the shallow end of our pool, and the consultant's preferred design concept located the lazy river in the same location that may be causing these problems with our current pool. Our community consistently indicated we wanted open swim space and long-course lap lanes in the survey's multi-select questions in hundreds of the survey's comments and in the public engagement meetings, but this public opinion was ignored and not used to direct the renovation design concepts. We are deeply disappointed that our citizens and our city commission were misinformed so often about so much through this process. We are hopeful that making this information known will prevent this lack of transparency from continuing in this project. We also request the appointment of a citizens oversight and advocacy committee to guarantee that going forward, this project adheres to the city's community engagement commitment to its citizens and to the International Association of Public Participation.
Patrick, that's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hi, Ari Dischinger from North Lawrence. The three opinion surveys included 18 questions to which respondents could provide further written feedback. Commenting allowed our community to express what was important to us regarding the pool renovation. Turns out, we provided a vast amount of feedback through a total of 5,749 comments. There were 2,721 comments in the first survey, which was supposed to help direct the development of the pool renovation design, 2,493 comments in the second survey, which included four open-ended questions about what might make our design concept better. These four questions ended up being a primary way that citizens could express their opinion about the renovation design options. Then there were 535 comments in the final survey that allowed people to express their opinion about the final design concept. Unfortunately, all of this feedback about the pool renovation and almost 6,000 comments that allowed people to express their opinion were not analyzed and were not presented to you, the city commission. And none of the reports from the public engagement consultants even mentioned that thousands of comments were collected through the surveys. In their final report, at the end of one long paragraph, they did mention that they gathered comments from the total engagement process of 14 meetings, Facebook engagement, and opinion surveys, but they did not mention that the vast majority of feedback was in the form of survey comments in the thousands. Their nine-page report made no further reference to any of these almost 6,000 comments, which were the bulk of our community's input on the pool renovation. Their report bullet pointed two types of online engagement surveys in Facebook. They said they received 75 comments on Facebook, but they included no mention of the almost 6,000 survey comments. The final report about each survey also contained no mention of these comments, nor did the consultants mention these comments in their May 14th or their June 4th reports. Their presentation here, before the commission on June 4th and August 13th, only included summaries of the survey's multi-select questions. They made no question, or they made no mention of the survey's 5,749 comments that our citizens had taken time to write. You, the commission, also did not receive any of the total 3,028 comments from the last two surveys. The final public engagement report only provided links to these survey results, did not mention that the survey's 1,000 other comments, and gave no indication that the commissioners needed to visit these links to access our community's primary feedback on the proposed designs. Then, the comments from the second and third surveys weren't even publicly posted, as they were supposed to be, so no one in our community had access to the comments until two weeks after the supposed preferred concept had been approved, which was when Holly discovered this error. And that was when we also knew we had to come before you to speak about this. Thank you.
Do you want us to sign in? Should we be signing in?
You can if you want. It's not...
Aaron Payton. None of the 5,749 comments from the three opinion surveys were quantitatively analyzed to provide numerical values indicating how frequently our community expressed certain ideas and opinions. Without this data, it is impossible to extract and make use of the information gathered in these thousands of comments, which were supposed to be our community's primary way of influencing the pool renovation designs. When an institution gathers comments in a community survey, it is their responsibility to acknowledge these comments, analyze their qualitative data, and present that information. Providing opportunities for citizens to comment leads them to believe that their voices are being heard and influencing the planning process. Ignoring that feedback is a breach of trust between the citizens and the government staff, which conflicts with both the IAP2 Code of Ethics and the city's commitment to community engagement in its strategic plan. All of the comments from the 14 meetings, Facebook engagement, three opinion surveys, filled out by the 3,307 people, were summarized in three sentences, sandwiched into Viero's report summary. The survey's comments and their content were not mentioned any other place in their written and verbal reports. Many of the public's comments requested open space for swimming, longer hours, longer season, more lap lanes, a lazy river, more shade, more seating, improved bathhouses, and a second location on the west side of town. But the commission was not made aware of these comments and their meaningful data that should have shaped the designs. At the October 15th commission meeting, two months after the final pool renovation design had been approved, the Parks and Rec Director finally presented qualitative analysis of two of the 18 questions from the three surveys that received comments. In both of these questions, the two most common answers were requests for more hours and a larger facility. Comments requested that our... These comments requested that our city not only maintain our current pool size, but even increase its size and availability. Many of the comments that have not been analyzed complained about the lack of open water in the proposed design concepts, and our community provided many other excellent suggestions in their thousands of thoughtful comments. Our coalition requests that the comments to the other survey questions also be qualitatively analyzed to continue to inform the next stages of development for our pool repair and renovation. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. What I don't kind of understand is, I thought you all voted to keep the pool the way it is, so don't we already have a design from when it was originally designed? Like, if the main purpose is to repair, I think we should be trying to spend as less... the least amount as possible. I don't know... I mean, I totally agree that public engagement was not done well with this project, but if you all voted to keep the pool the way it is, and it's mainly just repairing it, are we gonna... If we do this committee, are we gonna come back with a different plan where now we're not keeping it the same and we're having another plan that you all are voting on? I mean, if you want to keep it the same, just repair it, and I don't know if we need to spend $500,000 for a new plan. I don't know. I just want it repaired for as cheap as possible. Thank you.
Good evening. Tim Forkade. The square footage data was not provided to the public and was misrepresented to both the commission and the public. At the commission's October 15th meeting, Commissioner Larson asked Mr. Ruiz if the community had been made aware that the pool could be smaller in size. In response, he said, quote, "We had visuals of what the options were. I am not sure at what point of the public engagement process. We certainly didn't conceal it. So you know, it may not have been communicated directly at that time, but in our presentation, we did hope that it was conveyed," unquote. In reality, the significant reduction in the pool square footage was not made explicit to the community at any point in the community engagement process, but it was presented multiple times to city officials during the process. The city commission received square footage numbers of the current pool and design concepts on June 4, during the second of three stages of community engagement. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board saw these square footage numbers twice during the public engagement process on June 10 and July 8. The city commission saw these numbers again on August 13, when they voted to approve the preferred design concept. The square footage information for the current proposed pool was not presented to the public at any point before the final design was approved. This information was not included in the Stage 2 community engagement materials, which presented the four renovation design options between May 20 and June 13. It is... And it was not presented in the Stage 3 community engagement materials, which presented the final design option between June 21 and July 10. Our community didn't learn how much water space our pool would lose until local media published this information just days before the preferred concept was approved by the commission. And the information provided at that time was inaccurate and significantly underplayed how much water we would lose. The August 13 presentation to the commission stated that the preferred concept was, quote, "3,000 square feet less than the existing pool," unquote. However, the preferred pool design was actually 5,300 square feet smaller than our existing pool. This official documentation stated that it was only, quote, "3,000 square feet less than the existing pool." Such omissions and misinformation directly conflict with this project's code of ethics because they did not disclose, quote, "all the information relevant to the public's understanding and evaluation of a decision." And these actions undermine, quote, "trust and credibility for the process." Thank you.
I have a slide that goes with my portion.
What's the name?
Pardon me?
What's the name?
Lisa Harris-Friedman.
Did you send that to the CC Agendas email?
I think Holly did.
Because I don't see anything in there.
It's under Lisa Harris. I forgot that.
In the...
It's under Lisa Harris.
I don't see anything in the CC Agendas emails for Lisa Harris.
From Holly, not from Lisa.
Yeah.
I sent it to you. So they made you...
Okay. Yeah. I'll wing it.
If I can find it, but if you want to start your call...
Okay, sure.
I'll try to get it to Kirk. There is a picture in the packet that they have, even though it's a black one.
Okay. Sorry for the delay. I'm Lisa Harris-Friedman. Good evening, commissioners. I will be commenting on why our current shallow pool is sinking, the lack of discussion about this, and what can be done to address it. A section of our city's stormwater system is buried under the west edge of the outdoor pool. The picture on the left that you have shows the structure near Tennessee Street. The picture on the right overlays the structure, also shown in green, in the color version, onto the previous preferred design concept that also shows the current pool features. The current shallow pool is adjacent to this underground stormwater structure. The city manager for stormwater projects, Nick Hoyt, said that this portion of the stormwater structure was built within a natural creek bed that runs to the river. He said that the pool design team is aware of this and that there were conversations between MSO and Parks and Rec about how the structure or the surrounding soils may be contributing to the failures of the shallow pool. But to our knowledge, the design team did not share this information with you or the public. In all three presentations recently...
I don't see anything in the CC Agendas emails for Lisa Harris.
From Holly, not from Lisa.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I'll wing it.
If I can find it, but if you want to start your comment.
Okay, sure.
I'll try to get it to Kirk.
There is a picture in the packet that they have, even though it's a black one.
Okay. Sorry for the delay. I'm Lisa Harris-Friedman. Good evening, Commissioners. I will be commenting on why our current shallow pool is sinking, the lack of discussion about this, and what can be done to address it. A section of our city's stormwater system is buried under the west edge of the outdoor pool. The picture on the left that you have shows the structure near Tennessee Street. The picture on the right overlays the structure, also shown in green, in, in the color version, onto the previous preferred design concept that also shows the current pool features. The current shallow pool is adjacent to this underground, underground stormwater structure. The city managers, Cities Manager for Stormwater Projects, Nick Hoyt, said that this portion of the stormwater structure was built within a natural creek bed that runs to the river. He said that the pool design team is aware of this and that there were conversations between MSO and Parks and Rec about how the structure or the surrounding soils may be contributing to the failures of the shallow pool. But to our knowledge, the design team did not share this information with you or the public. In all three presentations recently given to the city commission, the team discussed the structural integrity of the pool's concrete, such as D-cracking. They also discussed the need to rebuild the shallow end, but they did not mention that the stormwater structure may be causing the shallow end to sink. This is important because the final design may place a full pool feature in that same location. Mr. Hoyt said that additional geotech analysis would be completed within the pool design. However, if the design concept is finalized before obtaining this geotech data, the design could set up the shallow end to fail again or lead to greater project costs due to stabilizing the soil. Mr. Hoyt has said one potential option might be to move the pool features to a place on the site where the geotech situation is not an issue. And we favor this idea to avoid similar problems or to stave off increased costs required because of stabilization. We believe that the pool design team should have shared this information and integrated it into your discussions for this multimillion-dollar project. A citizen oversight committee would help prevent such an omission like this. We hope you will create such a committee for this important project, not to micromanage, but to consider important aspects of the project that affect its function and its cost. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening. My name's Malia Alexander, and I'll be reading on behalf of Christine Bowman, who cannot be here with us tonight. Greetings. My name is Christine Bowman, and I spoke to you at the, at your October 15 meeting about concerns with the public engagement process for the pool renovation project. As a research psychologist, I am an expert in survey design, implementation, and analysis. And I spoke to you about flaws in the multi-select questions used on the initial survey questions. Our community carefully laid out our concerns with the public engagement process at that meeting, and public input was repeatedly ignored or misrepresented. Our community and the commission itself was misinformed throughout the process. Despite our strong argument, the Parks and Recreation Department claimed at the end of the meeting that they had engaged the public properly. It was a blatant lie in the face of all of our evidence. For this reason, I'm strongly urging the commission to appoint a citizen oversight committee for the remainder of this project. My confidence in Parks and Rec's process was already diminished by the initial phases of the public engagement process, but after Luis Ruiz's final statement at the meeting, my belief in the fairness of this process has been further eroded. Rather than taking responsibility for the mistakes his department made, he doubled down as if we had not had anything of substance to present. There is no reason we or the city should trust Parks and Recs to improve on their process if this was their stance on our presentation. The city has committed to comply with a public participation, participation Code of Ethics that ensures it, quote, "builds trust and credibility for the process," unquote. Because of the missteps Parks and Rec made in the initial phases, our community no longer trusts them to keep our interests at the center of the process. A citizen oversight committee would provide continued community engagement oversight, restore the optics of trust, transparency, and accountability, and model a blueprint for better processes beyond the scope of this project. Lawrence, citizens are the end users of this pool. We have a huge stake in renovation. Yes, the commission has decided to repair the current pool, hooray, but there is a long road ahead of us with many more decisions to be made. It might seem trivial, but in large-scale projects like these, seemingly small decisions can affect the overall citizen-led vision of the, of this work. And so our citizens should be a bigger part of this project. It would be a win-win for us all. Thank you for your consideration, and I look forward to your next steps in alignment with our community's needs. Thank you. Christine Bowman.
Hi, my name is Rachel Stumbling Bear. I became aware of the pool renovation process that was going on when I received the Flame Online in July of 2024. I appreciate getting these online newsletters from the city as it helps me keep abreast of what's going on since I have other duties that I attend to. I remember at that time looking through the materials that were provided where it did show the current layout of the pool and the proposed design. I then was thinking about it because I know that it's very, been very popular for lazy rivers to come, to be added to community pools. And I was talking to my coworkers who hadn't received the newsletter, they're not signed up for it, and found out that, no, they were in favor of it. So I do believe that the city staff has been talking to multiple people across all different types and ways. Yes, surveys and Facebook are great things, but just verbally talking to people in the community, there was excitement for this proposed redesign. Not everybody is going to fill out the survey. For that reason, I don't think that our cities, our recreation department and city staff have made an error. I think they have done everything they could by reaching out multiple times in surveys and through having public meetings to ask for that input. I do believe it's on us as citizens to be aware of what's going on in our city. We have to be engaged. And if we choose not to be engaged until the last minute, that is our fault, not the city staff's, and they should not be blamed for that.
Good evening. My name's Anne Underwood, and this is our conclusion. Our city's strategic plan commits the city to engage with its citizens to drive action and build trust in city government, and the pool renovation project promised to follow a Code of Ethics that commits the city to incorporate stakeholders' concerns, build trust and credibility, disclose all relevant information to the public, and ensure that stakeholders influence decisions. Our coalition believes that our analysis demonstrates that the pool renovation project did not comply with these ethical commitments and that Parks and Rec Director's assertion that they have not ignored public opinion in any way further eroded our community's trust in the integrity of the project. We request you appoint a citizen oversight committee to guarantee that public opinion is no longer ignored in this project. And we, the committee would provide invaluable expert knowledge from pool users about how the pool is currently used and how it could be better, a guaranteed avenue for citizens to share their input and expertise, a transparent planning process that means staff accountability, and collaboration between citizens and city staff that begins rebuilding community trust in our government. The commission's decision to repair the pool is not a conclusion to this project. It's a new beginning, and it's an enormous opportunity to maximize the city's financial investment in this invaluable public resource. This citizens committee is needed so our community gets the best pool renovation possible. We don't want to settle for just repairing our existing pool as it is. We want to optimize it. And there are many deep design details not yet decided, decided that will greatly influence the quality of our renovated pool for decades to come. And these include the shallow end's location and play structure, a slide to replace the big blue slide, bathhouse renovations, new shade structures, optimal ADA accessibility, and more. Up to this point, our voices have only influenced the planning process, and we have actively organized, organized extensive community opposition to the plans. We have had to share our opinions before the commission because this is the only public forum where our community's feedback has been publicly received and acknowledged. We are happy to continue making our requests before the commission, but this seems like an inefficient use of your valuable time. Our coalition's committed to continuing to advocate for optimal pool renovation, and we would much refer to advocate directly with the pool design team through real collaborative conversations. And we hope that the commission will take this opportunity to appoint a citizen committee that can work productively with the city staff and its consultants to optimize the results of this project for the benefit of Lawrence and its citizens. Together, let's plan a great pool renovation. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Dustin Stumbling Bear. I participated in the surveys. I've done that not just for the pool, did it for land development code and a whole lot of other issues in this community over the years. I shouldn't have to show up at a meeting to tell you I support something because I filled out the survey that you asked the city staff to do. Don't ever say something that stupid again, please. And going on, we have good faith in our government when we fill out the surveys that our participation is being valued. A few people who show up at a meeting and say, "Nobody wants a lazy river," nobody that lives in this community. This disabled veteran that wanted to teach his grandchildren how to swim in a lazy river because swimming is a pain in the ass on my back because of this, because of what I experienced in Iraq, lazy river was perfect. I was looking forward to it. But being told I don't belong in this community by my fellow community members was certainly an eye-opening experience. Being told that, "We've just listened to these individuals get up here and tell you." Presentations were made to the Parks and Recs Department and to you people. Public meetings. The information presented to you on your agendas is publicly available to every citizen in this community. They seem to know that, and then they're turning around and claiming none of this information was ever made available to the public. We get to choose to step up and participate or choose to step back and be apathetic cowards. I am not going to sit here and allow some apathetic cowards to tell you, create some citizen oversight review board that they probably aren't even going to show up to because they didn't show up for the other things, remember, by their own admission. We just don't know what's going on. We just, we just don't know when this information was put out there. We're completely blind to what's going on. Things are being done around us, not with us. Yet I'm a community member who got other community members to participate in these surveys. People shouldn't be able to show up at the last minute and say, "Because we didn't participate earlier, you got to do what we want now." I said this last week, and I know you didn't like it because I saw a couple of your faces get pissed. Sometimes you just have to tell us to shut the fuck up and move on. I know it's not pretty, but they're also using IAP2 ethics as a cudgel. It is a tool to encourage community engagement. They're trying to use it as some kind of a cudgel, which is not how you use those ethics. That's not how you use those rules and guidelines. I would ask that you can seriously consider not engaging with this citizen review thing that they want. They're not going to show up. They didn't show up when it was earlier, when it was time to be informed, when it was time to be engaged. Suddenly, they're going to show up now? Trust is a two-way street. You have to show up first to build that trust. I can't show up and then say, "You didn't build trust with me when I've done nothing" to try and do that. It's not a one-way street. It's two-way. We all have to participate, and they haven't done so, so far.
Any additional public comment here in the room? Okay. Sheri on Zoom?
Yeah, we do have one there. Stephen Watts?
Wow. Excuse me. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. That guy's out in left field, isn't he? He's blaming the people for a failed process. Okay, maybe they were late. We are late. What are we going to do? Punish them like a petulant father and abusive father? A citizen oversight committee? Wow, that's a, it's a good idea. What these good, decent folks are speaking to is a level of mistrust that exists now in and from public, the public, with respect to the way market rate paid salespeople, I mean civil servants, interact with the public with respect to public input. These fine people, led by a planning committee advisory board alumni, actually have trusted the process, quote-unquote "the process," something Sellers has warbled on about for months, if not years. And these fine people are now discovering just how disgustingly controlled the process is. I worked for government long enough to know the idea of public input is manipulated, and a lack of input is what is expected and anticipated because, quote, "we always have our own ideas as to how, what is best as we professionals." I mean, after all, we... What do these pesky members of the public go on and on about? I'm the paid professional, not them. I know best. They'll see. This is the attitude inside the belly of the beast most of the time. What's wrong with having a committee to oversee this? The project's delayed. Why, what is the hurry at this point in the road? So, in some ways, in all frankness, go ahead and vote it down. All you're going to do is anger legitimate members of the public who have a vested interest and have trusted the process, which hasn't worked. The boards are stacked with 180 degrees of opinion and controlled by town staff. So, as I see the shot clock put up there for me to be controlled in what I'm saying, please. It's just going to get worse. Thank you.
That's all the comments, Mayor.
Okay. Bring it back to us for any comments. Well, I guess I will say that I hold the belief, and I continue to hold the belief, that our staff works for the best for our citizens and the community of Lawrence. So I'm encouraged that Cory has stepped up and, you know, kind of go ahead and spearhead the Cory, I'm sorry, public engagement phase of it. But I just wanted to go ahead and just drop that note that, and I still believe it, that staff works for the city of Lawrence. So, and they're betterment of the city of Lawrence. So I just wanted to extend that.
I don't know if Cory's available to talk about, or someone from Parks and Rec talk about what they envision the rest of the process to be?
Do you just want to speak, want me to speak just generally, Commissioner?
Yeah, like what the...
Yeah, what the next steps look like.
How do you expect the process to go from here?
Yeah. So the majority of the conversations thus far have been rooted in exploring what the concerns are from various community members, along with things that they believe have gone well. So we're looking for shared values in the next stages of the process, and you've heard a lot of shared values, even if you've heard kind of a difference of opinion in how the process was done. I think you've heard some shared values that we can express in upcoming activities. Those activities might include multiple focus groups, which would allow people to have conversations where they could think more broadly and look at physical plant, like physical plans up close. They could ask questions directly in an environment with a variety of city staff people there to answer them. And they could drive through some of their, their values with us. And we could sit in a posture of listening, which I think is critical. I will say that there are limitations to any public engagement approach, but the approach that's been requested most often by members of this community is rooted in community oversight over the process. And I hope that that includes myself and my team.
Do you see, I'm not sure if ever, I'm not sure what exactly a community oversight committee would, would be, or what that would entail. I guess I'm more used to like a steering committee or something. Do you, you see a, a steering committee being useful to the process from, from here to help?
I'll be honest, the conversations I've had with Holly specifically, we didn't dive deeply into what the job description of that particular committee would be. So I can't speak to that specifically. But what I can say, I don't want to speak for her or members of the coalition, but I think that that's, that what they might be requesting is additional insight into the process and ability to feel like the con- and ability to feel like the conversation is a two-way street, that it's ongoing, that it's transparent, and that that transparency does hopefully build a sense of accountability. We've talked about kind of gaps in presentations. And I think there's been a missed opportunity to present like literal comments, quotes, direct language back to yourselves that they can recognize their own perspectives in the presentations being offered to the commission. And I think that, I don't know the specific outcomes of an oversight committee. But what I will say is focus groups, additional conversations in an open house environment, facilitated conversations that might be co-led by a member of the community and myself. I think there could be some similar outcomes to what they're aiming for. But again, you would need to speak with them about what their objectives are and rooted in the oversight committee. I will say, I am optimistic about what's coming next. I am optimistic about not only the investment of time and talent by members of the community. I'm not displeased by difference of opinion or perspective. That, to me, is part of this process. And it's up to us to create environments where those can be expressed productively.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. I meant to say, works, our staff works hard for our community instead of works for our community. But thank you. I'm glad that you're stepping up and glad to hear that information about it.
You're welcome.
All right. And we're here to vote on this particular item. The, "Consider authorizing the city manager to execute supplement number one to the engineering services agreement of SFS Architecture incorporating the amount of $5,488,000 and 30, or, okay, $548,330 for the Outdoor Aquatic Center major renovation project PR-1-00020." Is there any further comments? I'm not seeing any. I would entertain a motion.
Oh, that wasn't it? Was it your motion? You had the motion?
Oh. What's, I guess it is my motion. All right. Second. Yes, I guess that is my motion. I did motion. I didn't mean to read it in motion, but I'll take it. Go ahead.
I guess I was, I wasn't expecting the motion right away. I guess if we have any other discussion on that, I mean, I know that's on our agenda tonight. But I guess I was going to say that, you know, I, you know, we've picked a design, moving forward to that design. I'm, you know, if we have some sort of steering committee as part of the process from here on out, I think we leave that to Cory and her team to figure out. But, you know, I would want to be sure that the steering committee is reflective, as we always try to do, of the entire community, you know, not, you know, just members of the group that presented here tonight or otherwise. You know, I will echo that I got, you know, quite a few calls today, a couple of emails from people saying, you know, "I'm very disappointed you got rid of the lazy river." I was excited about the lazy river. You know, a whole group of people came in and said they don't want the lazy river. Understand that. Why'd you vote against the lazy river? And so, I certainly believe this is a process that has a whole lot of people who have a lot of care about the pool. And if you're going to have a steering committee, you want to have a group of people that listens, I mean, that, you know, comes in and has no necessarily, you know, people from different factions, like we often do, that come in and allow, you know, discussion and hear the input to help come up with the best decision. That will eventually come back to us in a meeting where we'll make the decision.
Yeah, I thought that we had already kind of tried to in advance communicate with this group's leader and tried to create a community dialogue with them in advance of this meeting so that many of these comments, I felt like, weren't taken into consideration that we're already planning on having this involvement. And I'm hoping that the person who leads our outreach effort can do the best job possible in allowing us to get the feedback we need. But again, this is a limited scope of work that they're going to be working on. We really can't do a whole lot of new space. We can kind of tweak where it's located. I think there's some details about what kind of concessions and restrooms and some other accessibility issues. But I think like those are the kind of things that we should be able to work out in a very short period of time. And also, this is a timing issue. We don't have all day to make these decisions. I know that in order for our community to continue to operate and for the pool to continue to operate, given its failure in some locations, we do need to get moving forward. So, I see this important to get moving forward with their input from the group, how they work that out. I don't think we're the best to make that choice, either the members of that committee at this point or how they operate. Perhaps they can be done and then come back to us. But for us to decide that tonight, I feel like it's kind of out of order, for me at least. And then, secondarily, the amount of money that we're talking about spending, I want to make sure I understand from staff. Can you talk a little bit about the increase in fees and how our changes have affected the cost of engineering and oversight on this project?
Mayor, real quick, just point of order. Just wanted it to be noted that since you didn't get a second on your motion, your motion fell.
Yeah, I can, I can...
So, we're back on discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Sheri, Jacob Palmer is on the line and can respond to the scope, the changes in that.
Let me, we had a few others added, but that's not a name I had. Let me see.
No, Jake Baldwin, I think.
Baldwin, I'm sorry. I said Palmer.
Jake's on. I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's right. Good evening. Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager with Municipal Services and Operations. Yes, the fee has increased slightly from the previous fee that we brought back. The fee that was originally, and it was only a few thousand dollars less than this, was for the preferred concept. The scope of work does change a little bit from the preferred concept to what we're doing here. And I know we've got Allison and Jeff both online to answer any specific questions related to that change.
I don't have any specific ones. I just want to make sure that it was clear that it was more and that we have a, you know, have a reduced scope and change. And I wanted to make sure I understood how the fact we're not doing as much engineering and yet the fee went up, I just kind of want to understand that a little bit.
Okay.
Is it okay if I speak? This is Allison Vanderver.
Okay. Go ahead, Allison. You see it.
Thank you. Good evening. Allison Vanderver with SFS Architecture, excuse me. So, based on the concept that was approved, the most recent commission meeting, it included renovating the existing lap pool in its entirety, which, so it's an additional component to what we had originally shared with you all for your preferred concept. And in then this proposal, we also included a few engagement components as well because we knew that the coalition or some additional work would need to be done because that concept hadn't been fully seen by the team. So, we know there's going to be a new zero-depth entry of a similar size to the existing. But we are keeping the existing lap pool. So, we do want to share some of those updates with the community as this process progresses. So, that included those, a few additional thousands of dollars. I think there were $2,000 associated with that.
Thank you.
Have a question, Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, the renovation is still going to include consideration for ADA access, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. In closing, hopefully. I just wanted to quickly say that there was a comment that was made that was very misleading as it relates to civil servants and those who work for the public. And as someone who worked for our state in doing the very work that we call on city staff, that we direct city staff to do, to imply that the work is done to be narrow-scoped and scripted, I think is, I think it's very disheartening. And it, it's disheartening for staff to hear it because you're essentially saying that they don't do the work and that they're not interested in being innovative in doing the work. And oftentimes, in city government and even in state government and federal government, while you are given narrow constraints, I have worked alongside and seen individuals in these settings do some of the most creative and innovative things. We've heard many times that we need to learn how to do more with less. And I will tell you, I would hypothesize that municipal staff, I will tell you for a fact that state staff, and I'm assuring you that federal employees hate hearing that because essentially what you're telling them to do is to give you subpar for less. You cannot give someone more with less. You cannot squeeze, you cannot squeeze a turnip dry and then expect it to reabsorb itself and give it more. It just doesn't happen. And when you do that, you actually end up creating additional barriers and issues that take up more time and more effort to solve. So, I just wanted to say that, that some of the most hardest-working people are your civil servants. And so, to say that they intentionally do their work to be subpar, that kind of hurt a little bit because I'm still part of that union. But I say all that to say, there was a subtext to this being pulled from the consent agenda. We were voting on the plan. There was something that could have been interjected at a later time during commission items that did not necessarily, I felt, need for this to be pulled off the consent agenda. But what I will say is that to several individuals that emailed and called who talked about, you know, an oversight, a compliance, or even a steering committee, I don't want to entertain that. And I don't want to entertain that because, again, us as a governing body and this staff spent a year going through with another steering committee on how to consolidate and maximize cogovernance and community participation in our boards and commissions. And so, we have a Parks and Rec Advisory Board that meets under the auspice of our unmistakable identity outcome team. And if you look at their November 11th agenda, you will see outlined exactly what the key points are and what the purpose and what drives them. And so, as it relates, we don't have to create things that don't need to be created when we have systems in place to utilize them. And so, if it is the charge of any of the commissioners on this dais to bring, to give that work back to any of our advisory boards, that is our charge. We have to gain consensus for that to happen. But those tools are available to us. It is up to your commissioner to wield them. And so, this is not saying there can't be an oversight and that there won't be oversight or that we even need a steering committee. We're creating processes where I have said, "You have to let the process work," where they're not being utilized. And so, you have boards and commissions that don't know what they do because they don't understand the relationship and authority that they have because they don't have that relationship with the commission. So, as it stands of what we're motioning on, I, you know, this is what folks have decided on. I wish we could have done more with the pool. Maybe this wasn't the place for us to do it. And that, once we get our Parks and Rec master plan, then it'll tell us what we saw in several of the comments that while folks want a lazy river, may not be the one downtown. Maybe we have to look at doing something out west or out south. And we put the lazy river there. So, I think we kind of get ahead of ourselves in saying that things are not what they seem to be. Where a lot of these aspects are subjective. And that as our communication team and as we talk about civic engagement, because it's not, it's not just a thing. It is a concept. And as we start to identify what members in the community think that concept is, then we'll truly understand the value of cogovernance and what that looks like as different projects go around. But I don't want to dismiss the fact that we have boards and commissions who work on our behalf and that it is us that has to do the work to give them the charge and scope to do the things that we hear from the community. And if we don't, that's just as much on us as it is on anyone else. So. Thank you, Mayor.
All righty. Any further comments or discussion?
I'll make a motion.
All righty.
authorize the city manager to execute supplement number one to the engineering services agreement with SFS Architecture in the amount of $548,330 for the Outdoor Aquatic Center major renovation project PR-1-00020.
All right. A second?
Second.
All right. Have a first and a second out there? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed. Pass five-zero. Thank you, Commissioner Larson. You were much better than I was.
Thank you. I should have made a motion.
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't. I didn't. So, I was just reading it out. All right. That moves us on to the next item we pulled, D-7A. There you go, sir.
Hello, my name is David Baston. I'd moved that we rezone this 3.49 acres to open space because the neighbors want it. Because, not because the owner of the land wants it. I've seen deers, ducks, hawks, eagles, skunks, snakes, raccoons, foxes, et cetera, on this land. And to keep it open and, and, and open space and green would be really nice. I've lived and played in that field for, played in that field and did some things there for the past 30-plus years. Yeah, and let's do this without asking the owner for their input, right? And also, I mean, the city owns fields like this, so let's, I'm sorry about that. That are opens, that are also open space. So, let's just rezone this field open space because the fields, because some fields in town are zoned that way. I know that the city doesn't own it, but let's do it anyway. And let's remember, too, that the Fritzels own this land and they're just terrible people, right? So, we can just bypass the process and screw them. And by the way, KU owns a lot, hundreds and hundreds of acres that aren't zoned open spaces. So, let's just tell them that we're going to rezone their land too, to open space. Let's see. This all sounds pretty ludicrous, right? I move to retract my proposal to rezone this land, this 3.49 acres to open space.
Any questions from?
Since this was pulled, you will need to declare...
Ex parte communication.
Oh, yes.
I have none.
See that part? I have no ex parte communications from this item. Nobody reached out to contact me about it?
I have none to report, Mayor.
None to report.
I have none to report, Mayor.
I have none to report.
All right. Any questions? Okay.
Sandy available?
She is on.
Sandy, was there a desire from the applicant or anyone to rezone this as an option of open space?
Apologize. Sandy Day Planning Office. That is the first comment that I have heard regarding that particular statement. The applicant's request is intended as a companion step with... The applicant's request is intended as a companion step with a preliminary plat that is in the process of being reviewed with the intention to be redeveloped for residential lots and a future tract right at the intersection.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No additional questions from us? It's not looking like. I'll open it up to public comment. Not seeing any here in the room. Sherry, any on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
Okay, pulling it back to us.
Move to approve to request to rezone Z 241010, approximately 3.49 acres from RSO to RS 10, located at 3701 Peterson Road, based on the findings presented in the staff report, and adopt on first reading ordinance number 10088.
Second.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, pass five zero. All right. Do we need a break? Okay. Before we move on to regular agenda items, we will take a 10-minute break and be back at 7:15. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mike Lawless, Deputy Director for MSO. And we have a couple items tonight. The first one is solid waste rates. And then after I speak on that, Trevor will come up and talk to you about solid, sorry, stormwater rates. They're both SW, so. Anyway, so the solid waste rates that we're going to talk about tonight will support the 2025 budget. And we'll start off with a kind of a review of our, sorry, of our strategic plan indicators. Right now, there are two of them on cost per capita of solid waste collected as well as employee engagement index for solid waste. As part of our master plan, we think there might be some KPIs that are more reflective of what we're trying to accomplish with solid waste, like diversion goals from the landfill and the like. So I think we'll see some modifications or replacement of these. And I think they'll be more meaningful in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. So more to come on those as we get into the solid waste master plan. And here, we just want to, I just want to highlight a couple of things that we've done this year, some of our initiatives in solid waste. We started a residential routing study last year. We completed that earlier this year. And as a result of that, we've made, we have some adjustments that we want to make in our residential collection days. So we have about 200, 280 customers that we are wanting to move from Friday collection to our Wednesday collection. That will help us kind of even out our, our collection days so that we aren't, Friday just right now is just a very, very busy day. And when you get done with that day, you don't really have time to prepare for what is to come the next week. And so by moving these 280 customers from Friday to Wednesday, that will help us be a little more proactive with our maintenance of trucks at the end of the day, cleaning them up, getting them ready for next week. So there'll be more to come on that, but you'll, you'll be seeing some press releases that we're going to send out, notices to those 280 customers, letting them know that at the beginning of the year, we're going to make those changes for them. So more to come for those customers. New roll-off billing software, and I'm going to kind of couch that with the equipment and roll-off replacement at the end there. So utility billing acquired and implemented a new roll-off billing software called Docket. And with the increase in tankage that we bought this year, so we bought about 74 six-yard and larger containers, and we bought 92 and three-yard containers to help us supplement what we had as well as replace some of the old tankage that was falling apart. And we just kept welding and welding and we weren't really getting anywhere with those. So I think we've made some great improvements with that billing software as well as the additional equipment that we bought. You know, just, it's worth mentioning that we did approve an agreement from 2025 to 2027 with the Teamsters for that MOU. So that was an accomplishment that we had. That goes into effect January 1. We completed the second of our alley rehab project, so we did six alleys this year. And the, the improvement that we have in those alleys is greatly appreciated by the solid waste staff. Solid waste doesn't pay for all of the alley rehab, but they have a significant portion to fund for that. And it makes a, it eases the wear and tear when we can roll those containers to the trucks without having to go over cracked concrete or gravel and broken up asphalt. So that was a, I believe, a good accomplishment, and there's more to come on that. We did smart, we did start a Smart Truck Technology Pilot. However, as we got about two months into that project, we found that the technology, while it is an improvement, it is not exactly what we thought and doesn't do the, it doesn't make the job of the supervisors easier. In fact, it actually adds to some of their workload. So we stopped that pilot and we are now looking at some other softwares that are out there for another go-around of that. We talked earlier this year about our fleet transition study. Solid waste has a lot of heavy-duty equipment, and so that figures prominently into that fleet replacement or transition. And those are things that we're going to have to, that we'll be looking at as we go Just some things to look at for 2025, kind of what's to come. As you see, I had Smart Truck implementation. And so as you can guess, that change has come pretty recently where we decided that, you know, the things that we wanted to accomplish with that, we just weren't able to do. And with the dollars that we were going to look at to implement that, it didn't make sense to us. And so what we want is something that makes us more efficient, makes it easier for the supervisors and the drivers to do their job. And I, I'm confident that software is out there and we're going to find it. As I mentioned, in '24, we did equipment replacement. We're going to do the same thing in 2025. The budget includes dollars to do additional large tankage as well as those small roll-offs. Solid Waste Master Plan, I have a scope and fee, and you guys will be seeing that come before you, before the end of the year. I think I'm looking at December 10th for that, but that's something that you'll see this year and we'll begin working on that in 2025. Also, in the rates that we're looking at, we're looking forward to the solid waste campus planning, some of the engineering that's going into that, and then ultimately construction of that, of that phase of our campus project. And then, as I mentioned, we have another, the third of our alley rehab projects. And right now, we're looking at about six more alleys that we'll do with that project So as we made the forecast in the rate model for, the rates for 2025, these are just some of the items that we looked at in terms of equipment and repairs, maintenance, our personnel, taking into account the, the changes in the MOU, you know, what supplies and materials, our vehicles CIP, as well as looking forward to the solid waste campus. We have disposal fees for both the landfill and the MRF, and those have escalators on those. And so those are calculated or figured into the rate models. And then in terms of the rate inequities, what, what that bullet is getting at is our residential rates have been subsidizing our commercial rates. And so last year, we hit it pretty hard. We think between this year and over the next two years, we believe we can get that to where they're both paying their. to where they're both paying their cost of service. And so all of those things we looked at and figured into the rate model itself. So for 2025, these are the recommended rate increases that we have. And, and actually, these are less than what we had predicted that we might bring when we talked to you guys a year ago. I think we were looking at about 6.5% on the residential and multifamily. We've been able to get that down to 4%. And what that means is for somebody with a 65-gallon cart, they would see 88 cents a month increase in that cart cost. For our commercial side, again, as I said, we were, we're trying to get that subsidy that the residential has been paying, we're trying to get those in line. And last year, we had predicted that we would see somewhere about 12.5% on commercial, and we've been able to get that down to basically between 7.5% and 9.5%. And I can't really give you a dollar amount on those because it's based on size, the number of pickups per week, and that list is quite extensive. And it's really best viewed as a, it's, it's a pretty long table that we have for that. But those are the kind of things that we, that we're going to see in the, the rate ordinance that you have before you tonight. This graph is quite busy, and really what we're trying to show is the, the, I don't know if you can see my mouse on there. Can you see that? Oh, I see it now. So this blue line is residential, and the yellow and green and gray are the commercial. And so you can see where with the zero here, that's, that would be paying for itself, cost of service. So you can see there's quite a subsidy by residential. And over the next three years, we're looking at bringing that down to where it's much, much closer. Actually, I guess it's four years. It's the end of the, the period that we're looking at, the five-year period. Our action steps tonight are to adopt solid waste ordinance 10090. The next steps would be to have the second reading on December 3, with an effective date of January 1 of 2025. And with that, I will stand for questions.
All right. Any questions?
One question. So the big jump in 2028, what is that? Where it looks like you're...
So that would be the, the debt that we would issue for the campus. And then that's why you see the, the subsequent drop in the, the blue line for residential, because then we start using our fund balance pretty heavy that first year, and then you can see we, we kind of evens out. And what that does is that helps us to smooth out the rate, the rates that we're looking at. If we waited until we got to 2028 to do that, we would have to see a fairly large jump in rates in order to accommodate that the first year. So what we're doing is going to use the fund balance that we've, that we've got to help ease that transition into the debt service.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing any further questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll open it up to public comment. Not seeing any in here in the room. Sherry, any on Zoom?
Julie Jones?
Julie Jones, 66047. I have a, does the stormwater management, I'm sorry, does the, does this department also handle the stormwater drains? Okay. Yes, no?
That's coming next.
Yeah, that's coming next. We're, we're on solid waste right now.
Solid waste. Okay, thank you.
Jeffrey Hepler?
Good evening all. Jeffrey Hepler, 66044. I just wanted to say I appreciate the foresight of steadily increasing rates because things are getting more expensive and, yeah, better to do it now than, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. I'll go ahead and bring it back to us for further discussion.
Well, I always appreciate when you estimate high and then come in with something lower than that. That's usually not what we see.
It is helpful.
That is helpful.
And, yeah, so that's very helpful. And, you know, obviously, we're, we're doing a lot in solid waste. Appreciate all the work of the staff and all the frontline workers on that. So I think we're making progress. And so 4% of the residential rates, I think, is, given all the inflation we've had, is, is fair and, and a good way to go, and obviously balancing it with commercials. So I'm supportive of this.
Any further discussion on this? Not seeing any. I, I would concur with Commissioner Finkdai, everything he said. So it's a pleasant surprise, so.
And move to adopt on first reading ordinance number 10090 to establish solid waste rates for 2025.
Second motion.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pass is five to zero, none opposed. All right. Move us on to the second agenda item. Receive stormwater rates presentation and consider adopting on first reading ordinance number, number 10091 to establish the 2025 stormwater, stormwater rates.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Trevor Flynn, one of our Assistant Directors with our Municipal Services and Operations Department. And I believe we have our consultant online this evening as well with Ralph Telus. Okay. Okay, we'll start this evening with a quick highlight of our strategic plan strategies and key performance indicators that relate to stormwater. We've prioritized staff training on the green radiant systems and have several trained on Envision, which is a green radiant system for our lateral projects that includes the Jayhawk watershed. This relates to this KPI that includes the percent of capital projects that account for climate, climate adaptation by achieving LEED certified or Envision verification. In fact, I think we have over 90% of our engineering staff now certified in either the LEED or the Envision, and a few of them that have actually been certified in both of those radiant systems. The next KPI originally included public land that is used for environmental sustainability uses, including green infrastructure. There are some updates to the KPIs taking place, and this one's being updated to measure the percent of the total city land area that has protected natural resource area, including green spaces. We are using the APWA's green stormwater best management practices to evaluate a variety of nature-based type solutions, in addition to the traditional practices to manage stormwater in many of our upcoming projects, as well as the stream channel setback that will be implemented with the new land development code. Stormwater reliability is another KPI that includes our stormwater asset condition. Asset ID Assessment and Modeling Project, that we'll touch on later, has provided the data to better understand the stormwater system, along with our inspections programs. We utilize this data to prioritize issues identified, but the true reliability of the system will come with completing the work as we start the projects from those assessments. Stormwater is often forgotten until it rains, and that's, that's because much of our infrastructure is in the ground, underground, and out of sight. The city's storm infrastructure includes 7200 structures, 16 miles of open channel, 160 miles of stormwater pipe, four pump stations, and 19 miles of levees on the Kansas River in Mud Creek. Stormwater in our community and in most other communities is billed based on an equivalent residential unit rate, or ERU. The ERU is based on the impervious surface, which includes roof lines of a house, accessory structures, driveways, and concrete patios and the like. When our system was put in place in the mid-1990s, the average impervious square footage of residential area was 2,366 square foot of impervious surface. We know the actual impervious surface has increased over the years, and we mentioned getting this updated at last year's presentation. We are in the process of gathering this necessary data, and we do anticipate that this update will be completed in 2025. As we have in the past, we enlisted the assistance of Ralph Telus Consulting, who developed our stormwater rate model for our analysis. The rate analysis is a comprehensive look at system revenues, operating budget, and CIP projects. The key variable cost factors listed here are the primary drivers on the cost side. Revenues are set based on our known structures and current ERUs, and the capital projects and the CIP drive the large expenses for the stormwater fund. We have received and recommended rate increases over the past years to ensure a lot of important projects are implemented to benefit our ratepayers to address stormwater challenges in our community. In highlighting the 2024 projects, we have three big projects that made progress in 2024 that were identified in the 1996 master plan, which will include the soon-to-be-finished Sixth Street from Iowa to Mass Street Corridor project, which is in its final push, and two others, the Maple Lane and Jayhawk Middle Reach, will continue into 2025. The Stormwater System ID Assessment and Model Creation Program is well underway and will serve an essential role in laying out the framework to deliver stormwater improvement projects for decades to come. This program improves the accuracy of stormwater mapping, condition, and hydraulic capacity data across our service area. This is an ongoing project as we completed field data collection, structural assessments, and mapping updates throughout the city, along with the hydraulic modeling. A supplemental agreement for this project was just approved last week, and we anticipate having over 90% of the service area completed by the, or 2026. The replacement rehab and lining program helps us address structural issues as we go through and TV the system and inspect structures such as failed or corroded pipe. This program also helps us with our corridor project approach, so we are in and out in just one time as we coordinate improvements with other infrastructures such as sanitary sewer or water lines. It's also used for the emergency repairs or design work for smaller projects we find, so we can be ready to work on these and just schedule into subsequent years. There's also a significant portion dedicated to the MSO campus with our stormwater operations moving to this facility and site work starting this winter. The highlights for 2020, or 2025 are really just continuation of the big projects I noted on the previous slide. I will note the CIP for the 2025 includes $19.2 million in stormwater projects. The rate recommendation to fund the 2025 stormwater budget and CIP is a 60 cent increase to the ERU, which is a 7.5% increase as it was last year. The 7.5% increase reflects what we showed for our future increases in last year's presentation. The revenue sufficiency graph illustrates the rate increase funding in the purple line and assumes the rate increase will remain at 7.5% as we showed last year. The rate-funded capital reflects the cash projects, and the proposed debt service is our large bonded projects. The action being requested this evening is to adopt on first reading ordinance number 10091 to establish stormwater rates for 2025. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we'll stand by for questions.
Okay. Any questions? All right. I'm not seeing any. Just making sure. Okay. Thank you. All right, I'll open it up for public comment. Not seeing any here in the room? Sherry, any on Zoom?
Yes. Julie Jones?
Okay, I'm back. Julie Jones, 66047. The area I've been addressing with the city with the stormwater drains, I have a natural one behind my house that is a trash-filled dumpster site, unsightly area. And every year, they tell me there's no money in the budget for it, but I never see it put on the agenda to be cleaned out. We offered to do that five years ago as the neighborhood, and the city told us, no, you can't do it, only we can do it. So my question is, when is the area east of Ranch Street, along the south side of, or the north side of West 24th Street, when is that destined to be cleaned out? Because right now, it's a cesspool of trash and mosquitoes.
We wouldn't be able to, we're not going to answer that right now.
No, I get that. I get that. I don't know who to contact about it. I mean, we would do it, but they said we can't do it. So it's a nightmare. It's, oh my God. And it just keeps filling up with car tires, you know. The city let the guy over on the other side build into it. And, yeah, anyway, that's all I got. I'll just keep pushing. Thank you. Maybe this is the guy I call.
Don't think he heard you.
Stephen Watts?
All right, thank you. It's my experience that Mr. Flynn's office does a superior job in helping our town keep our streets free. It's great. The issue centers around the, or an issue centers around the discussion between his department and Parks and Recreation and some others' department with respect to the collection of debris in the streets relative to street cleaning. Because evidently, the guys who got to deal with stormwater in the sewers don't have any control over the street sweeping of sle, of leaves. Hopefully, there can be some kind of mix so that the two departments work together. There is no schedule for street sweeping, as I understand it. And it seems to me that keeping all of these leaves out of the stormwater system is going to help Mr. Flynn's operation ex potentially. These guys cannot dig any deeper than what we've already got going. So the ability and the willingness of these departments to speak to each other and coordinate their activities so that there is a central plan, that there is actual organization, would be very helpful. Thank you.
Jeffrey Hepler?
Hey, y'all. Good evening again. Jeffrey Hepler, 66044. I had a question. There was mention of ERU rate increases of, I think it was 7% to 8%, and that the numbers for actual data calculating actual ERU increases over time is expected to come out in 2025. So I just want to know what the relationship is that the, the anticipated rate increase versus the supposed, the proposed 7% to 8%? And secondly, I've done a lot of landscaping projects around the city, especially in Western Lawrence and the new developments, a lot of drainage jobs. Lawrence and the new developments, a lot of drainage jobs, and I can say that stormwater management from a residential source is one of our biggest issues right now as far as management and non-point source pollution. So I know there was a, like a pamphlet or brochure that was given out recently to residents of the city about cleaning up leaves in the gutters and things of this nature, saving water, et cetera. But I think there's more to be done to educate homeowners on proper stormwater management on their side of the property line. Thank you.
That's all the comments, Mayor.
Okay. All right, bring it back to us.
I guess I'll ask a few of those questions. I think the first question from Julie Jones was on a specific, particular waterway, but maybe, I don't know if you can answer that one particularly, but we often get questions about waterways and the duty of cleaning up.
Sure. And I am not familiar with that particular area, but I do, I do know where she's talking about, and I'll just have to do some asking, and we'll get you that information.
Generally speaking, lots of people live with something behind them. How are those handled compared to the more traditional stormwater inlets in the street?
You know, I think that's one of the things that we're wrestling with right now is open channels and how that is, how those are cleaned and/or maintained. You know, certainly, we don't have the staffing to maintain all of those, but I think there has to be some, probably some rules or guidelines that we need to follow as we get into those channels, and I'm not sure that we have those developed yet. So I think that's something we need to look into.
Okay. I think, second question, and I know you did send out some pamphlets recently about street sweeping and leaves in the system, but it'll, how is that coordinated?
Do you have information on leaves in the street? So in terms of the educational part?
Well, I, no, I think really, I was appreciative of that, but I guess, I think the question was the coordination between, if you guys run the street sweepers or someone else does, and how's that coordinated?
Yes, MSO runs the street sweepers that you see out on the public streets. In terms of coordination, yes, there's a lot of fall cleanup that they do. They target typically the flatter, older neighborhoods routinely that, think of the downtown area, that where there's a lot more growth and less areas for residents to actually clean up their yard, so to speak. That's usually their primary. They typically have a schedule that they operate on. I'm not familiar with it offhand, but I could certainly get back to you on how they do that. But on average, we typically, we do track the miles that we sweep every year as part of our MS4 stormwater permit. We report those, and we well exceed our goals usually on lane miles and a number of streets that we cover.
Okay. And then I think the last question was maybe explain a little bit more about what will happen when we create a new ERU and how that'll affect rates going forward.
Well, as I mentioned, we're still gathering the data, and part of that data collection is the QA QC of the current impervious areas, as well as developing that new ERU. We anticipate the ERU will get bigger as properties have gotten bigger, but as we think of older houses tend to have maybe one-car driveways, but maybe, maybe a larger footprint with a ranch house, where some of the newer houses might be a little bit more efficient with how they maybe go up, but they might have a two-car, three-car driveway, but they're typically built closer to the streets, so they're shorter. So that's a little bit, I'm kind of projecting that's what we anticipate seeing. But I think also with, as we do the QA QC work, we may see additional, you know, more ERUs in the city in general as we, because we're looking at all the commercial properties as well. So I hate to lay out my prediction on that, but I do anticipate there'll be a possibility for those rates to actually trend downward if we get all the QA QC right on the actual impervious area in the city.
Thank you.
So to make sure I understand, your hope is to hone the way you charge people based on the actual runoff of each property, is that correct? And then some folks' rates may go down if they're, or stay the same, or there'd be less fluctuation, but there will be an increase in certain areas based on the actual impermeable surfaces?
That is likely, yes. So that will be, that will be within ordinance change as they adjust those.
So there won't be any increase in cost to anyone based on these ERUs until those are approved by this body in the future, correct?
Right. That's correct. Yep. And that's, so with that ERU work, we're doing the ordinance work as well.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions?
Well, you don't get a bonus because you came in less than you projected, but at least you came in at the same. You didn't go up. So you get, you get some sort of kudos for coming in exactly where you predicted, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Anything else?
Yeah?
Go ahead and get her going here. Adopt on first reading ordinance number 10091 to establish stormwater rates for 2025.
Second.
Have a first and a second. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve five to zero. Thank you all for all your work. Well, then I'm going to go ahead and exit as well. All right. Item three, provide direction and feedback related to the Historic Resources Commission's request for demolition moratorium for properties within the two scheduled historic resources surveys. And I would expect probably Lynn, or no, okay, all right.
Good evening, Commissioner. Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services. This item was discussed at one of your October meetings, and we're just bringing it back for continuation of the discussion and feedback and direction on the item. Happy to answer any questions, and don't have any other information than the letters that were attached as part of the item this evening for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions?
Jeff, do we, have we done moratoriums in the past when we've done historic plans or neighborhood plans?
The one that I can recall was before my time, was around 2003, 2004, for what was the Hillcrest, Old West Lawrence and Pinney Plan, or the HOT Plan as it's better known. I cannot recall one in recent history, but that's the most recent one that we could find.
If we want to proceed with this, assuming we want to proceed with this, am I correct that, and maybe this is a question for Randy, but the direction would be to bring back an ordinance or ordinances to, that would institute the moratorium until a set, until a given time? Is that, is that the process?
That's correct.
And do we, last question, do we have a timeline or an approximate timeline when we believe these surveys would be completed?
We anticipate that to be around the end of September.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Any additional questions?
So it's next September? Yeah, 2025. Okay.
Not seeing any? Okay. All right, I gave it a beat. Thank you, Jeff. I'll open it up for public comment.
Dennis Brown, from the Lawrence Preservation Alliance. LPA is mostly in support of the new land development code, but concerns consistently expressed by historic neighborhoods, particularly those adjacent to the university, that the combination of new density incentives could potentially pass the point of beneficial redevelopment into an unchecked urban renewal that will damage the character of those neighborhoods, have not been answered. LPA is now convinced that's because there is no answer in the new code. The Plan 2040 goal of surveying historic resources 50 years or older and assessing their historic significance has been met by county government, but the city has lagged behind. The city does now at least have grant funding to conduct a survey in University Place neighborhood, which has worked with city staff and the LPA to identify and secure funding sources since 2017, well before the work began on the LDC. Also, for two years now, LPA has been working to identify and study about 30 city sites connected to the founders of the Lawrence NAACP in 1921. A separate survey using another grant from the same source is now underway on those scattered sites, with the community match of $6,000 put up by LPA. As both the LDC and the UP survey are city-sponsored projects, you should recognize the potential conflict here and impose a moratorium on demolitions of structures 50 years or older within the two survey areas while this important survey information can be gathered. If information comes back next fall that certain individual properties or potential historic districts would likely qualify for state or national listing on historic registers, then this commission can study that information and determine what further action it may wish to take. We strongly advise you to put the moratorium in place on these two survey areas ASAP. The Historic Resources Commission is offering to help you by conducting a search of what other university committees are doing, communities are doing to balance increased density and preservation goals, to study our city's Chapter Five, Article 12 demolition of structures or other potential possible avenues, with the goal of presenting to you a set of recommendations to consider that could minimize the unintended consequences that may be at play here. This may be the most consequential work the HRC has undertaken since its formation in 1988. You should encourage this work, and please direct staff to help them in any way they can. Thank you.
Hi. Mandy Enfield. I'm the president of the University Place Neighborhood Association, and first, I want to say I agree with everything Dennis said and really appreciate his comments and the support we have from the LPA. We appreciate the expertise contributed by the city staff and the commission and the HRC, along with the support of the Lawrence Preservation Alliance to secure funding and move the University Place historic designation process forward. We want to be good stewards of this investment, and this moratorium, I think, is the only way to be good stewards of all the work that has been put in by the commission, the staff, and the Preservation Alliance's investment. We look forward to the survey results and the upcoming process, and we ask you to strongly support the demolition moratorium recommendation and move it forward to the HRC. Thank you.
I'm pleased that you're considering this matter. The strategic plan is all about strong welcoming neighborhoods, and certainly, a lot of our planning documents refer to the importance of preserving the built environment. In 2021, the Planning Commission authorized a round of neighborhood plan updates to comply with the 2040 document. The East Lawrence Plan was to be the first. Public engagement started and ended on this in 2022, ended because of consideration of the Land Development Code amendments. Historically, the first East Lawrence Plan was adopted in 1979. There was a historic survey in '95, and there was an update in 2002. Eleanor recently was informed by staff that the process is restarting in January or February of 2025. This could include updated survey work, as well as a possible overlay district, similar to what's there in Oryad. The plan will inform how we can densify in the most compatible manner with the built environment. The HRC has requested this moratorium on demolitions in areas where survey work is underway. They were unaware that the East Lawrence Plan process was restarting when they made this request. We hope that they and you will consider East Lawrence to the area under consideration for a temporary moratorium pending completion of the plan. Thank you.
All right. Sheri, any comments on Zoom?
Yes.
Hello again, y'all. Jeffrey Hepler, 66044. Thank you all for giving me space to speak. I appreciate it. I live in University Place neighborhood. I do rent, but I love my little house. I don't want to see it getting torn down. I try to take care of it as best as I can. I meet and love my neighbors. We help each other out. Not to say that that wouldn't change with the changing neighborhood, but, you know, I was really excited when I heard about this survey happening. I was excited to participate in it, and now that I hear about this idea of a moratorium, I'm in support of that, too. If you're surveying a potentially historic neighborhood, you shouldn't be tearing down structures in it in the meantime. Thank you.
That's all the comments, Mayor.
Okay. I'll bring it back to us.
I would jump in and say this is something I've talked, you know, through the code development project, this had come up a couple times, and I will say that I, well, I disagree maybe with Dennis's first set of comments, and Barry and I had a conversation today that the impact of LDC on neighborhoods, you know, there's a difference of opinion on how that might play out, but I think it's very clear that if we're conducting a survey to see if we should save structures, we shouldn't demolish them while we're in the middle of the survey. So I think that's a rational moratorium to have until we know what we're talking about. So I would support directing staff to set up the moratorium until those surveys are done.
I would concur.
Yeah, because I would support it. I think that it's always a good idea to not to do things when you're in the middle of doing surveys. You gotta kind of sit back and wait to see how they could turn out, so I would support it.
Would that be two separate motions then?
Those are just feedback, direction.
Oh, just direction? Oh, I'm sorry, just direction? Okay.
The direction would be to bring back some ordinances that contain the moratorium?
Yep.
Jeff, is that enough direction?
Is that enough?
Yes, that's enough direction. If we understand it is to bring back a demolition, or excuse me, a demolition moratorium for University Place survey area and for the NAACP founder's site's survey area.
Correct. Yes.
We understand that direction.
So the completion of the survey?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Do you need the scope of that? I know it was laid out in several of the requests. Do you need us to give you that length? Would you prefer that we at least give you those parameters, that it be one year, or are you wanting to work that out yourself?
Let us take a look and see, because there are some requirements for demolition moratoriums that have to go in place for the time and the duration of it, but let us kind of look through that standard and bring that back to you for consideration with the ordinance.
feedback related to the Alvamar Neighborhood Association's request for a city commission to initiate the rezoning of golf course within Lawrence to OS open space district. And we...
I sat down too soon. My apologies. So this was another item that was elevated during that same discussion. There are four golf courses that are inside the city of Lawrence limits. One is Eagle Bend, which is owned by the city of Lawrence and is currently zoned OS, and there are three private golf courses that have different levels of zoning, somewhere between RS7 through, I believe, RM12, if I remember the map correctly. And so the Alvamar Neighborhood Association forwarded a letter to you all outlining that they would like you to consider initiating a rezoning request for all golf courses in the city of Lawrence to be zoned to OS. And so that is the correspondence you have attached with that. We'd be happy to answer any questions we can on that.
Any questions?
Similar questions to last time. Do you, I believe I recall a situation where we've done city-initiated rezonings before, but do you recall any or how that process has worked in the past?
I don't recall one where a property has already had a zoning district applied to it. There are instances where the city commission has initiated rezoning for properties that are zoned UR or urban reserve district, kind of the holding district as it comes into the code, but I don't recall a rezoning of a property from a standard-based zoning district to another standard zoning district.
Didn't we do that in East Lawrence with some of the use-based rezonings? Maybe. Randy's jumping on here, I guess.
Yes. I think that was one that was initiated by the neighborhood and asked, and as part of that, that the owners could opt into the rezoning process. I can't think of one where it's been more of going, other than the city commission initiating going from a UR to a base district.
Randy, does that sound?
Yes. This is Randy Larkin, deputy city attorney. The only situation I'm aware of in the past where the city has unilaterally done rezonings of property is the East Lawrence Neighbors Association, and that was started by the neighborhood group, and they brought it to the city, and the city went ahead and said, "We're going to rezone everything to make it consistent with the code," because there were a lot of nonconformities in East Lawrence at the time. But it also allowed property owners to opt out of that program if they were not happy with how the zoning was going to go. So that's the only other time I can think of anything other than the UR rezonings, when we annex property in the city and doesn't have a zoning category, then it becomes UR. So those are the only times I'm aware of the city doing a unilateral involuntary zoning.
But under that process, we decided a zoning district sent the owner of the property a letter saying, "This is what we're proposing. Let us know if you disagree," and then we reacted to that response.
This is Randy Larkin, deputy city attorney. Yes, that is correct. That's how that was handled.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Jeff. I will open it up for public comment.
Thank you, commissioners. Scott Robinson, president of the Alvamar Neighborhood Association. Thank you for including our request on the agenda today. As you know, we are recommending that the city exercise its authority under Kansas Statute Section 12-753 to use the open space district designation for all city golf courses that are not currently zoned open space. This designation would recognize and be consistent with current treatment and zoning of the public golf courses and parks in Lawrence. With respect to the privately-owned golf courses, we've been in touch with representatives of Lawrence Country Club, and they are in support of this zoning change as well, and I believe a letter has been forwarded to you guys with regards to that, as they could not be here tonight to speak. And in case that letter isn't available, I've got copies for you to have if I could give them to Sheri perhaps to distribute. Thank you, Sheri. It is our understanding that the Orchards Golf Course is subject to a conservation easement, so open space zoning would be consistent with the preservation of those areas. The current owner of the Alvamar course, now branded as the Jayhawk Club, and his architect representative to the Alvamar community in group meetings and in individual meetings and before the city commission itself, that the golf courses would remain as such. If you live on a golf course hole, you will continue to live on a golf course hole. We have some video documenting this meeting that you'll see in just a moment. Several, open space zoning simply reflects and codifies the owner's commitment and holds him to it. The factors supporting open space zoning of the Alvamar Golf Course far outweigh any interests or objections the current owner might have. An open space zoning decision simply puts into effect his repeated promises to individuals, to the community, and to the city government and its constituents. Finally, I would like to present to you a petition signed by over 350 members of the Alvamar Neighborhood Association in support of this request for open space zoning, and thank you for your time and consideration. I'd like to introduce Bob Lighton, who is the vice president of the Alvamar Neighborhood Association. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, members of the commission. I'm Bob Lighton, and I'm vice president. I'm also a resident of West Lawrence, and Scott has stolen my thunder and has given all of our talking points. I just am here to reiterate everything he said. Most importantly, to stress to you that, as the video that you're about to see shows, is that the current owner made promises to the commission that this was going to be a golf course for essentially forever, and so to have all the courses rezoned open space would be consistent with that promise. So I think we're ready to go to the videotape.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think we're ready to roll the first video, or I think you have two, right? Is it one or two, Scott? Two?
Kurt.
It's actually like four.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm introducing the first two, and then Chris Davis is coming next, is going to do the next two.
That'll be great.
I don't think you can hear them.
Yeah, it seems a little quiet.
But it does function as three nines, and I think it shows that our earlier commitment when we started this, that if you live on a golf course and you had a golf hole behind you, I think you have a golf hole behind you now.
I mean, this is, for all of this to work, this is about the golf course and providing a few other things that help make this function for us to generate the money to put back into the golf course, so we have 400 or 500 golfing members. So, you know, on one hand, a one-time office helps generate money to fix the irrigation system and do all these other things that we're talking about. The long term is really about 500 members wanting to golf on 27 holes and pay that price. So I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Did you have a second one to show?
I think so. There's a second one.
That this owner, like in to Paul, Paul, you sound like you're saying that if the commission were to grant the approval of that office building, that this owner developer would not be back?
We would not be back for any more skirt footage.
And how, I mean, you can, are you representing the developer or the owners tonight?
Of course you are. I believe I am.
So to what degree are they willing to go to ensure that that happens? Would they voluntarily enter into an agreement that gets recorded against the property that gives the city the right?
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. I was about to...
To preclude that?
Thank you.
I think that would certainly be an option.
Would they agree because?
You can do the third and fourth video. They're short.
Was that all you wanted to play of the second video?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's all there was.
Did you catch that, Kurt? Go ahead and play three and four, and then I'll start the clock. Thank you.
I thought we had four different ones. Then, I guess, play four then.
Yeah.
We'll roll with that.
Yeah.
And I think that, Paul, you guys did do a really good job of keeping that development in the center of the course, but that doesn't mean it can't change in the future, and that's something I think the neighbors are really wanting to make sure is protected.
In a motion that we refer this item back to the Planning Commission with specific direction on top of their reconsideration is to have them look at some kind of contractual arrangement, as was suggested by the city manager, on the balance of Lot 3 and Lot 4 as it looks at residential office and other rezoning requests other than residential, that we have them discuss with the applicant, either some form or some kind of mechanism being considered about, you know, to make sure that the golf course stays a golf course. And I'm not sure, unless I don't take this wrong, but I'm not sure conservation, you know, overlay is the way to go. If there's some way that, there's got to be some tool.
It's going to be a legal tool somehow.
Yeah, that can be put in place that guarantees that that remains a golf course and a viable golf course.
All right. Thanks for what you do for our community. We really appreciate it. To me, the open space zoning is a simple and elegant solution. It creates a win-win-win. A win for the city as it retains the neighborhoods the way they were built around green spaces and golf courses at both Lawrence Country Club and the Jayhawk Club. It creates a win for the residents that live in the area as they bought their homes with the golf course and green space existing, specifically at Alvamar over 50 years ago in 1968, and Lawrence Country Club in the early 1900s. I don't know if that hits the historical mark or not that we talk about a lot, but I'm just saying. And at last, it creates a win for the courses as it protects the area as open space, which protects the land to remain as a golf course, as they were asking for in the video. Thank you for your time. We appreciate your efforts.
Thanks.
My name is Mike Riling. I'm an attorney, practiced here 43 years. I do also want to thank you. I know you probably don't hear that enough. I don't agree with a lot of what you do, but I do appreciate your service and I do appreciate your time. So I wanted to say that before we get into this. Lawrence Country Club started in 1914. I think that was their little nine-hole course. The first city zoning ordinance was passed in 1927, so there wasn't a zoning ordinance when that golf course started. It was redesigned, 18 holes, and the first comprehensive zoning ordinance that the city had was in 1966. So the reality was, when LCC was built and my great uncle was a chartered member of that golf course, there was no zoning for that golf course. 1968, Bob Billings, must to the consternation of a lot of Lawrence Country Club members, started a thing called Alvamar. 18 holes. Lawrence Country Club wasn't very happy with it, but he did it, and in 1975, he then turned that into a 36-hole golf course and had another plan for another 18 that, when the city built the orch-, not the orchards, the Eagle Bend, he abandoned. But he did, in 1979, also build the Orchards, a nine-hole golf course. Now, the thing about it is, is honestly, golf courses in this city have kind of gone underneath the radar, really haven't thought about zoning for golf courses. They've just been zoned. If you look at it, LCC has zoned RS10, the Orchard's RS7, west part of the Jayhawk Course is RS7, the east part's PUD, and Eagle Bend is OS. They're all golf courses, and not one of them, well, a lot of them are zoned differently. And all that we're asking tonight is for you all to send this down, and let's think about it. Let's think about the zoning as it exists in Lawrence with regard to golf courses, because the reality is, there hasn't really been a lot of thought put into it, and you really haven't had a lot of debate over golf courses, for one thing. First one started before you had zoning. So, nope, you don't have to make a decision tonight, other than let's just think about it. Let's think about what we want zoning for golf courses to be. I was at the stockholders' meeting for the Lawrence Country Club, so I do know that it was talked about supporting this idea, because I don't think most people know what the zoning is for a golf course. So thank you.
Hi. Oh, where are you going to speak? You can go. Okay. This is Chris Flowers. First, I'd be just curious, do we have an environmental board or department we can ask for an opinion when it comes to environmental claims? I'm not sure zoning private golf courses as open space is good for Lawrence or the environment. Private courses require memberships, or they can, they can require memberships. They are more expensive than public ones, and just by that, they are less accessible to the public. So if we are going to treat the private courses the same as a public one, they need to offer the same accessibility to the public. If we only have a limited amount of town, we can zone as open space, which I've read should be 15% to 20%. Do we want to be taking up this zone, like this open space, with exclusive memberships requirements? I don't think it's good for the common person like me. And also, when y'all had the land development code meetings, was there a strong desire by the citizens to save our private golf courses? Was there a push saying, "Hey, we need to zone these private courses as open space," or did that come when they found, when people found out that apartments might be built on them? And here's the problem I have. The city says it needs more urban density, and it needs to reduce sprawl and help the environment, so it passes a new land code, and then a neighborhood wants a golf course zoned open space to avoid housing being built on it, which would increase the urban density. So what does the city do? It considers the request. It potentially changes zoning to preserve a golf course? So if, I don't know, I don't think we should be trying to save a golf course. And here's the question I have, another one. If not, if we don't build, if we save a golf course and we don't build apartments on it, then where are we going to build apartments instead? The wetlands? The undeveloped areas on the end of town, which would increase sprawl? Because that's what's going to happen. You're going to save the golf courses, and then something else has to be sacrificed to make up for what you're using the open space on the golf courses for. And other projects have come, like you, didn't you, there's that one project that was going to redirect the stream or whatever. That's a much more pressing environmental issue than a golf course. So, and I heard something being mentioned, this is a win-win. If this is good for Lawrence, then where's the environmentalist? Where's the rest of the town? I think it's just mainly people living next to a golf course, and if those are the only people showing...
And also, when y'all had the land development code meetings, was there a strong desire by the citizens to save our private golf courses? Was there a push saying, hey, we need to zone these private courses as open space? Or did that come when they found, when people found out that apartments might be built on them? And here's the problem I have, the city says it needs more urban density, and it needs to reduce sprawl and help the environment, so it passes a new land code, and then a neighborhood wants a golf course zoned open space to avoid housing being built on it, which would increase the urban density. So, what does the city do? It considers the request. It potentially changes zoning to preserve a golf course? So, if, I don't know, I don't think we should be trying to save a golf course. And here's the question I have, another one. If not, if we don't build, if we save a golf course and we don't build apartments on it, then where are we going to build apartments instead? The wetlands? The undeveloped areas on the end of town, which would increase sprawl? Because that's what's going to happen. You're going to save the golf courses, and then something else has to be sacrificed to make up for what you're using the open space on the golf courses for. And other projects have come, like you, didn't you, there's that one project that was going to redirect the stream or whatever. That's a much more pressing environmental issue than a golf course. So, and I heard something being mentioned, this is a win-win. If this is good for Lawrence, then where's the environmentalist? Where's the rest of the town? I think it's just mainly people living next to a golf course. And if those are the only people showing up, I don't think it's good for the rest of Lawrence. Thank you.
My name is Amel Tonkovich. My house is located on the third fairway of the Alvamar Nine Golf Course. I grew up on the south side of Chicago with a steel mill in my backyard. And when I came to Lawrence, I wanted to have some open space. So, I bought a house on the Alvamar Golf Course. It's a beautiful location, beautiful open space. My house is just a basic 2,000-square-foot home, but it is very nice. When I came here, this is what's very interesting about this conversation tonight. I was here about the fifth, about the fifth year when I bought my house, the Galvamar had already been developed. And the houses were still being marketed, still being marketed, as including an Alvamar membership with the home. This is critical, because when we first purchased our homes, this is the first five to 10 years that the development that I was in, the homes were marketed as including a membership to the golf course. That was included in the purchase price. I paid a premium for my house because of that membership. So, we talked today about Mr. Fritzl and other people saying, if you live on a golf course, you'll always be on a golf course. There's a history to that, because there was a contractual relationship between the original owners of these homes, and I wasn't even an original owner. And I had a contractual relationship with Alvamar, that this would be a golf course. I paid for that as part of my house. So, all of these statements that you hear about this will always be a golf course by Mr. Fritzl, this simply reinforces the idea that, of the original contractual relationship people had with Alvamar. Now, if this course is not designed or not zoned to be open space and it's developed, we will have tremendous property devaluation. In fact, it's already happening. The property values are being devastated just by the threat of it being developed. And that will spread throughout the entire area, there'll be a rumbling effect, everybody's homes will be developed. But there are other reasons here, the gentleman who just spoke about the environment. You know that people spoke before, very knowledgeable people, about the damage to the environment that building homes in this area would be. There's drainage problems, there are all kinds of issues with wildlife, there's a lot of reasons. There are so many reasons, not just the property values, but environmental reasons why this should be continued, to be an open space and be designed to be an open space. The open space was designed for golf courses, that's what it was zoned for. One of the major things was open space for a golf course. In addition to that, it is consistent with all of the language you heard today about the promises that this will be an open space. That's consistent with the original contractual relationship we had with Alvamar. And finally, it will be good for the environment.
That's time.
Thank you.
Hi, David Bastin. Just watching those videos, I didn't really see a whole lot of what they're talking about, other than Mike Amick's there at the end was talking about getting with the planning department and coming up with the contractual agreement that we could come back with. Who's got the contractual agreement? Just a question there. If it was, it would have been zoned, what it was, open space or whatever, at that conclusion of those meetings, so. Also, it just goes back to what I said earlier on rezoning issue. I mean, I don't think, as of now, anybody, any of the owners, maybe LCS, of course, they're going to agree with that, because they have no intention of ever doing anything with that, because, I mean, it's owned by the members, it's their shareholders, so. But on this, yeah, just a question there, I mean, you didn't even get with the owners, and I know prior, the owners had no intention of building on that property. Personally, I've been trying to talk with them about doing some low-income housing that we're needing very badly, and, oh, that might, that might be bad, because then their property value might really go down, because who knows who's going to live there, right? Yeah, just the whole deal with forcing some, but, yeah, back to Mike Amick's, or, this was Randy when he was speaking, the rezoning that they did do didn't actually force homeowners to comply to this, it basically asked them. So, if, if you do what they did there, I mean, if you just go ahead and zone it like the neighborhood association's wanting you to, it's never happened before. You gave the owners the oblig- or the, you gave them an opportunity to say, no, they didn't want that. I didn't realize Eagle Bend was in the city limits, but I guess it is. Yeah, I just, I would just ask that you deny the Alvamar Neighborhood Association the request to initiate the rezoning request. And that's it, thanks.
Okay, it looks like no further here in the room. Sherry Anzoum?
Jeffrey Hepler.
Hey, y'all, Jeffrey Hepler, 66044. If you were to assign these golf courses as open space, I would hope that it would not be at the expense of designating additional open space. And I know you have to meet a certain quota. I just, if you look at the satellite of Lawrence, there's a lot of golf course. And people talk about environmental benefits of golf courses. Yeah, it's green, but, does anybody remember the landslide at Fritzl's Jayhawk Club into his pond? Because I do. I'm not saying that all golf courses are mismanaged, but this is, in my opinion, the lowest bar for open space. That is all, thank you.
Stephen Watts? Stephen Watts?
Hi, thank you. Wow, what that last poster, or that last commenter was providing is, is very, very curious. Isn't it interesting how the University Place Neighborhood Association, in conjunction with these other guys over here in golf course land, can't get together and say, let's work together? Ah, maybe there's compelling reasons why. You know, I appreciate the last poster's willingness to participate, but still, you know, all of this stuff for a golf course, there are a lot of promises made to a lot of people, and it's just so curious that these guys who bought on a golf course, listen to a developer saying, it'll be there forever! But now we're seeing that it's not, and they're expecting something from you guys. I mean, I don't know, you get this guy from Chicagoland, hey, man, south side, north side, zip code 60091, 60093. So, you fled the wealth of Chicagoland and come down here to the ghetto in Lawrence, get up on a golf course, and it's all Matt Daddy good, and here we are now, four million years later, and it's changed. Welcome to Lawrence, Kansas, Chicago style. Meanwhile, we've got another guy out here who doesn't even live in Lawrence, talking about what time it is and where to put property, this, that, and the other. It's just so very curious, you know, that these people come in here with no dog, I'm sorry. They have no reason to be in the show. I appreciate their willingness to come in here and talk, but when people from out of town come in here and want to tell us, you and me and everybody else who's associated with the town, how to run business, it's really kind of curious. Do we need to bring some of my associates in from the north side of Chicago? Or, you know, from Maui, or from California, or Chicago, to come in here and participate and opine on what's the best way to deal with Lawrence, Kansas? The deal is, is that these guys over here in golf course land have not been participants in the global community of Lawrence with respect to the way property has been going. And I'm sorry for them on a marginal basis, but, you know, stuff changes. Thanks.
Greg Muesel. Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you. Greg Muesel, attorney for the Alvamar Neighborhood Association. I just want to speak very quickly about some of the points that support the consideration of zoning the golf courses to open space. First of all, you've heard a lot of discussion tonight on earlier items about your stormwater management, your storm drainage issues, all of which end up relating to the amount of impervious surface. These golf courses need to stay as pervious surface to help you meet your goals on storm drainage. You've heard the depth and breadth of concern from neighbors, including a petition tonight signed by over 300 people, continual comment during the land development code amendment process. This is not a new issue, and it is not something where anybody is a Johnny come lately. This has been a concern for many, many months, raised with the city commission with some sympathetic ears. It would distancy to your golf courses, and one of your comprehensive planned priority goals, two of them are strong neighborhoods and green space and open space preservation. Without these golf courses preserved as open space, you will lose it and you will never get it back. Whether you add it somewhere else in addition, as some speaker suggested earlier, is one thing, but you will never get this open space back if it is not zoned open space and retained that way. Finally, it is an important thing for the city commission to consider, holding people accountable when they make promises, pledges, representations, and promises to this city council in this chamber, that they be held accountable to those promises. I much appreciate your time, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Alvamar Neighborhood Association.
That's all the comments, Mayor.
Okay, I'll go ahead and bring it back to us for discussion.
Guess I'll start kind of like the last issue. This is a topic that came up a lot during the code committee, and in a couple of the locations, not just Alvamar, but also a little bit with LCC, not so much with orchards, but certainly a point of discussion. And so, I mean, obviously, what we're doing tonight is providing direction, but, yeah, I think, you know, I support the golf courses being uniform and being open space, and I think we want to at least, you know, start that process. I think maybe like we did last time, we send a letter to all four, I guess we don't have to send a letter to ourselves, but three of the four, saying this is what we intend to do, and getting their response, and then, you know, then having it on the agenda to make that decision in a future meeting.
Jeff, I had a question. I think Mr. Hepler brought up the comment that we only have so much allocated open space here in the city. How would, if we're supposed to proceed in that manner, how would that affect that?
Excuse me, it wouldn't really necessarily affect it, there's not a quota of open space that a city has to maintain or have, it would just be, the amount that you would declare and zone to that effect there. So, you can be open space as a land use and not be zoned to open space districts. So, there's a little bit of a disconnect between the use of a land and the zoning of a land. So, as you think about, there might be park space that could be zoned to GPI, which is your general public institutional uses, there may also be park space, or open recreational space in certain neighborhoods that are also zoned to RS 7 or RM 12, depending upon where they're at. So, there's not a specific amount of open space zoning that has to occur in a city, or open space land use that has to occur, that, so I just wanted to get to your question.
Okay, yeah. And would, would open, the current zoning of open space, would that be the most appropriate for this, if it were to happen, if we were to pursue that?
We have not done the analysis against the land uses in the code to make sure of that one, because we don't know what all other uses are associated with the golf courses and the properties. So, while there may be, the primary use may be the golf course, there may be accessory or ancillary uses that may be affected by that, we have not studied the courses to understand what all is going on in those properties and make that kind of a determination yet.
So, would there have to be some in-depth research before that it's even considered?
Correct.
Okay.
So, why did we choose open space zoning for our public golf course?
I would have to double-check that, I wasn't here when that occurred, but typically, when you get into those usage for active recreation, most of parkland that we have in the city is zoned open space, because it either does something for flood control or some kind of a water purpose on that one. So, you'll see that very similarly around the levee, as a good example of that one. But usually, it's mainly just, there was a uniform zoning applied in 2006 for lands that were owned by the city of Lawrence and used for park and recreation uses.
So, it was a blanket zoning under that purpose, then?
I believe that to be the case in that instance.
Thank you.
And I guess I would ask, because I assume this is something you'd want to look into, as I understood the LCC letter, and talking a little bit to Jeff Morrison, who had signed it, I mean, they want to be sure that they could, you know, if they had to build a shed or, you know, you know, something consistent with, with the use of the country club of golf, a shed, a, you know, something like that, if that was allowed in open space. And so, I think there's, they all have a few questions like that. They'll probably come up as far as that review.
It would, yes.
I have two questions. This one's for Randy. So, Randy, am I to understand that the city could potentially force a landowner to accept a different zoning for their property? Is that correct?
This is Randy Larkin, this is Randy Larkin, Deputy City Attorney. The city does have the authority to unilaterally rezone property, yes.
And can the property owner protest it?
Yes, there is a process provision for that, and then, of course, there's other implications related to that as well. But, yes, it can be done.
Thank you. My last question is, what's the tax rate for open space? Is it different than residential?
I do not know the answer to your question.
I could answer that, because I do a lot of county tax work. Tax rate is not based upon zoning, it's based upon use.
Okay.
So, it depends on the use of it, not what the zone is. So, changing the zoning doesn't change the tax rate, it's the use that is taxed.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, initially, to kind of come back around, I'm hesitant to, you know, proceed with, you know, declaring this open space without, you know, giving the landowner, or the property owner, an opportunity to go ahead and comment on it. So, kind of to that earlier situation we had, where the property owner had the opportunity to opt out if they wanted to, that would be the only way we could consider that. On the second part, there's obviously a lot more research that needs to be done with it, and I'm fine with that, but that's kind of where I'm sitting on it. So, exploring it further is fine with me, but if it were to come to fruition, that would- would be the only scenario I could see it.
Yeah, I'd like to hear about Albemarle.
If I may object here, this would all have to be started with an application. It would have to go through the planning commission and come back to you. You would not have the authority to do that on your own. It would have to come as a recommendation of the planning commission through that process. Even if we did it unilaterally, it still will have to go to the planning commission. There might be an opportunity to protest that by the owner, and then it will come back to you. So this would just be a matter of getting ready and starting the process. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Thank you for that clarification, Randy. I'm sorry, Commissioner Larson, you were going to say something?
That's okay.
Well, I think we have to give direction of either move forward with the process or not. I mean, Mayor, if you're willing to at least move forward with the process.
Yep.
Yeah, I am. I am.
As well.
So I'm going to move forward with the process and explore it and do some more research on it. So is that...
I'm okay with the research on it.
Okay.
Really would like to hear more of the overall picture.
Okay.
I think we're getting the full picture.
No, that's, I'm, that's becoming apparent, but Commissioner Sellers, did you want to have any comment?
I do. Well, real quick, Randy, it may, I may have misheard you. Can you repeat what you just stated not even a minute ago?
This is Randy Larkin, Attorney. If the city decides to go forward with the unilateral rezoning of the property, we would have to direct planning staff to make an application, and they would go through the planning commission. The planning commission would review it under all the provisions of the city code, golden factors, and then make a recommendation to the city commission as they do in any other rezoning matter. And then it will come back to you for the final decision.
Okay. So the vote tonight, or at least the direction, I feel like there's two different things that I want clarification as to what folks are wanting to do, because there's the ability for us to direct staff to start the application and go in front of planning. And I'm also hearing folks say, let's do research. So I just want to make sure that the let's do research people mean that they would like to direct staff to start an application that will go before planning to unilaterally rezone these properties, to rezone these as open space. So that's, I'm just, I wanted to make it clear, I wanted to make that clarification because I didn't know if that was what everybody wanted. That's what I want, but it doesn't sound like there was agreeance in that caveat, so.
I believe we need more information in order to make sure that we can move forward with this, including some of the commissioners wanting to make sure the current landowner has heard about what's happening. And then I think we then need to decide as a commission whether we want to submit it to the planning commission. So that would be, I still think, this was like a, do we want to even consider this? I do want to consider this. I feel like just the fact that one golf course is zoned one way and the other one is zoned another is enough for me to not feel comfortable with the current overlay as it is today, the inconsistencies and the density alone. So I think if we're going to have standardization in our zoning, I think we need to start right away and we just planned, you know, we just created a new plan and set a new zoning designation. So I feel like now's the time to clean up what we've done in the past, either accidentally or on purpose, because I believe some of these zoning designations were just overlays at the time when they built the residential subdivisions. And I don't know if the density is honestly a better or more, an improvement for some of those areas. So we would need to make sure the density is consistent if we're going to overlay these. And if it's open space, great. If it's RS-7, I don't care, but whatever it is, I feel like the inconsistency across the city doesn't look good on paper, and more importantly, it provides even greater risks to the landowners adjacent to the property. So for me, that's, that's a more uncertainty to the current landowners. So if we can clean this up at all, that's what I'm looking for. Yeah.
But am I to understand that by agreeing to move forward with the application, that will be part of the discovery, because we're basing this, we're basing this on authority given to us by KSA 127, what is it, 12753? So I just, I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, because the idea is that if we direct staff to start the application process, that, that as they start the application process and review, that the discovery will be part of the whys, the whatnots, what that would look like. Therefore, any of the applicants that would, may or may not object to this, would have that opportunity in front of planning to do that, then it would come back to us. So it kind of encapsulates all of the things that everybody's wanting, but I'm just wanting to make sure everyone is in agreement of that, because I keep hearing we want more discovery, but discovery would be a part of the process if we directed staff to start the application.
Looks like Randy has a thought on the process.
Think us, Randy.
Randy Larkin, Attorney. You could do it either way. You could ask staff to bring back more information, and then you can make a decision to go forward with it, with the application and planning commission, or you could do it the other way and go directly to directing staff now, if you believe you have enough information to make that change or make that recommendation. So you can do it either way. So it is obviously within the city commission's purview to make that decision.
It's a matter of taking two lefts or taking a left and right.
Yes, absolutely.
Or driving the roundabout twice.
Well, I'm interested in getting some more information. I really would like to hear from Albemarle. I mean, they're the party that would be affected by this and just gather more information about it.
So bring it back before you do an application.
To hear what?
I'd feel more comfortable with that as well.
How much time? You want to wait a couple of weeks or what's the...
Whatever. Whatever.
Jeff, what, to bring back more?
How much time would you need to bring something back to us?
You know, ballpark, knowing the workload that the staff is under right now, it'd probably be three to four months at the earliest that we'd be able to bring it back. And that would be us also shelving some of our longer-term projects, like the neighborhood plans that fit this in. So it could be a few months before we actually make contact, have the meetings, and understand the research that we'd have to do.
At a similar timeline, if we direct the staff with the applications, is this the same as just...
Correct.
Okay.
Either way, it would be that one. We just have a definitive kind of ending on, we know the 60-day calendar for planning commission to consider, but I would, I would anticipate probably a three to four-month process of research and understanding each golf course, their uses, their history, and the understanding of what's going forward with that.
Okay. Thought maybe you would tell us one was more environmentally efficient.
Well, Jeff would, it wouldn't take that long to send a letter to the three or four property owners and ask them, if they, if they wanted to initiate, I mean, it would be a different process if they wanted to initiate, if they were okay with the designation.
Correct. That is a much different process on that instance.
Yeah.
Okay. So it seemed like to me that we would direct staff to at least send a letter quickly and start that information process.
Yeah.
Mayor's as well.
And then I'd be interested in getting more information, I guess, a lot quicker than three or four months to, I guess what I'm hearing is we're not sure we want to put you through a three or four-month process until we know more information, like chicken and eggs sort of thing. I think we want you to come back a lot quicker with some information about what we're talking about here.
So is this a matter of that we want to send the entities letters that say, hey, KSA 12753 says we can do this, we're wanting to do this, do you object? And that would satisfy you three if they answered that letter and just came back to us and we made a decision?
I'm good either way, but it would satisfy commissioners, and yes.
Yeah. That would be, that would be good.
Yeah.
I mean, I would hate for me to get a letter from the city saying, we're rezoning your property, and I don't have any information about it.
So I think what I'm hearing is we're directing staff to send a letter, and then I think, I guess what I'm hearing, I might have a different opinion, but trying to get the consensus here, send the, ask the staff to send a letter, and then, in maybe December or January, come back to us with an agenda item that tells us a little bit more about OS, about what the process would be, and about what the response to the letters were. And then we could, at that point, direct staff either to file the application or not, or if entities wanted to do their own application, we could start that process.
That sounds good.
Does that January letter timeline work for you?
I believe so. It'd just be the question of how fast we get responses to that, but I, you know, I think sending a letter would be pretty efficient on timing.
Okay.
Does all of that work with you?
Yes. Understand the direction, and we will go forward in that direction.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I'll let everybody leave if they want to go ahead and leave before we get to work session. We just did.
Yeah.
We just did. Yeah. All right. All right. The work session provides an opportunity for the city commission to discuss items in greater detail. The commission will take no binding action on items presented during this time. The work session topics are eligible for public comment. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments. And we'll start off with the first one. Item one, receive concept and cost updates on the Lawrence Transit Downtown Station project and provide feedback on the two site finalists.
All right. Well, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Adam Weigl, Director of Transit, back to talk about Downtown Station. To remind everyone of this project and what it aims to do, our current station lacks a lot of modern and functional operational amenities of transfer centers that buses use. So adding driver restrooms, individual bays for buses, better seating, weather protection, security booth and information for folks along with the staffing that comes with that is all part of what this project aims to do. A lot of these amenities exist at the platform portion of Central Station, not the building itself with all of the indoor amenities, but a lot of that exterior stuff that you see at our main hub, we want to replicate in a form that fits downtown. So our timeline, we're here in November talking with you about updates, concepts, and costs. We do have a couple of periods that we will ask for KDOT assistance with federal documentation. We have Sarah Frost here tonight. She is with Train Systems, KDOT contracts with Train Systems, to help implement all of their access innovation and collaboration grants, of which this is one of them, and helping us with that federal planning worksheet that would start occurring after this meeting, as well as the NEPA worksheet after we have finalized a single site to move forward on. That's technical assistance that Train Systems and Sarah's group will help us with. Still hoping to stay on a trajectory that helps us get to going out for more formal design work and construction in the upcoming year. The concepts you'll see tonight, I'll probably reiterate this a couple of times, are 10%. You know, they're not meant to be, they cannot be a very high level of concept work to get ahead of a federally funded project. So if there's details you're concerned about, let's talk about them and also understand that this is early work to start to paint the picture a little better of how things might be laid out. So this work really kicked off formally in January when you all had us establish a steering committee, go through a series of steps to narrow down what sites we were looking at. The last time that we talked with you, you helped us get down to two sites that we would focus in on for updated concepts and costs. These are those two sites. I trust, trust me, these are different pictures. They look very similar, but you've got City Lot 9 on the left is a lot at the northwest corner of 10th and Vermont, and the lot on the right is City Lot 14. It's at the northeast corner of 8th and Vermont, so just a few blocks away from each other, very similar in size. Project budget, this is a federally funded project, as I mentioned, so there's $406,000 of local match from the transit fund and a little over $1.6 million of federal funds that will be part of this work. We have one concept for each site. Keep in mind, like I said, with 10%, a lot can change once a full design firm is underway and things are being wrestled with, but I'll orient you to the first concept here, which is parking lot nine, which is 10th and Vermont. You've got, just landmark-wise, to its west, you've got the homeless resource center. You've got churches on the other three directions with DND Tire Caddy Corner. So if you're a landmark person, that's some of the stuff in the area. I'll note something proactively that one of our steering committee members asked me about, which is, in both of these concepts, you'll see six bus bays. We've been talking about the need for five bus bays for five routes that serve downtown. In the required elements of this project, we always needed a parking space that would be used by a maintenance staff or a 24-foot cutaway bus, one of our smaller buses, when we have drivers come to do switch outs. If they are relieving somebody from their service, they bring a bus like that and trade spots with someone who will continue in the large bus for the rest of the day. So these concepts ended up with enough room that we could fit in six bus bays instead of five with that maintenance vehicle or switch out operational vehicle using one of those bays when there's space available. So just wanted to note that, if you noticed that. So this particular lot would have two bus bays that are on, that are street-side. They would be out of the travel lane, but you'd have a bus facing southbound on Vermont that would pull into a sawtooth bay. You'd have a similar situation on 10th Street, the north side of 10th Street. The other four buses would pull into the lot and circulate around a central island, very similar to what Downtown Station does today, just at a smaller scale. There are some portions of this that are, you know, the exact turning movements and things haven't been fully vetted, but enough so that we believe this type of movement can work. Couple other colors you see on the screen, the orange area is meant to block out space for restrooms. We've talked through the project about an absolute requirement for driver restrooms. There's also been interest in public restrooms, which I think we remain cautious but open to with the right staffing and oversight of that type of amenity. There's also a purple box that shows an area for a security or information booth. One of the challenges of our current site is not having a place where if we were funding a security or customer service type individual, they have no place to get out of the elements. And if they're there for eight-hour days, that's very challenging. So we are blocking out space for an indoor spot that someone could exist and help people find their bus, also help de-escalate situations before things might arise. The green boxes signify canopies, so we particularly want those at the entrance and exits of the buses, so that experience for people there out of the weather. I think that's something that could change depending on budget. Ideally, we have more canopy coverage, so it's just a more comfortable site weather-wise, but concept as it stands today, trying to be conservative with what those costs might be. I will note the cost estimate that you see at the bottom, just shy of $1.9 million. Cost is not a huge differentiator between these two sites. They're basically the same size, and so you'll note not a huge difference there. The site that is at Lot 14, which is very nearby and partially overlapping our current transfer area, this has the senior resource center across the street to the west, AT&amp;T Building to the north. The library is out of frame here, but is very close, just down the block, 700 block of Vermont. This site also has a couple of buses that serve bays that are street- that are street side. They pull in from the street, out of the travel lane, but otherwise pull right back into the street. You see that on Vermont on the left side. There are four other bays that fit interior. In this case, Central Island houses those restroom and security booth amenities. And so the other seating and weather protection canopies are around the edge near the bus base. I'll note that, you know, we know there's challenges with crossing in the area today. We know that in this site in particular, just patterns of how people move around, entrance and exit to the parking garage right there, that we needed some improvements when it comes to crossing. So a yellow box across Vermont signifies a raised crosswalk, similar to some of the hawk beacons that you see around the downtown area, near the Art Center across to that parking garage, for example, a raised flat crosswalk with, you know, a safer way for people to get back and forth. Cost estimate here, about 1.8 million. So you see we're in the ballpark, especially this early in design, so much can change, that we look at those costs and don't see a huge amount of concern either way. Different way to look at the timeline again. You know, tonight is not a voting night for you all, but we do hope you can help give us some feedback on these two sites. Like I mentioned, after this, we are going to work with Train Systems on a federal planning worksheet that helps score these two sites based on some of the feedback you all provide, based on objective information about costs and operational efficiency. And with that information, want to come back to this body, last meeting in December, hopefully to vote on a, one site to move forward into final design. Getting down to one preferred site is what we must do before we can start the NEPA process. FTA won't have us do NEPA processes for two sites. So it's important that we learn some info tonight, more in December, and are able to move forward in that way. That keeps us on track for design and construction. So there are, blocking my own, there are a few different discussion prompts that we are pretty broad, but hope you can help give us your thoughts about. We're hoping that after looking at these, you might have some concerns that you might raise, design or adjacent land uses, or anything else that might come up. We think there are some opportunities at each site. And if there are kind of overlapping opportunities or concerns that are having you more favorable towards one site or another, we'd be interested in hearing that. So we're prepared in December to give you as much good information that helps with your decision at that time. So that's my information tonight. Happy to answer questions, go back to concepts, whatever might be helpful.
Thank you, Adam. Questions?
I just have one on 700 Block. Thanks for all the information on this. Original drawing kind of had more street-centric layout. Can you touch on why we moved pretty much more, just chose to take over the entire parking lot instead of only a portion thereof, please?
Some of that is, the first drawing you saw is Adam Weigel Engineering Design Services. You know, I think, I don't think we had confidence that we could do turning movements in that small of a lot. So I think we were considering it just being more likely that we'd need to remain on the street and look at, you know, shrinking the number of travel lanes and using that space for the bus base. I think in our current setup, and I think there's some public comment that alluded to this too, there are challenges with having everything be on the street and just the way people walk around buses and move to and through them. So I think when we saw the first set of concepts come back from Train Systems and their architect help get these in this shape, we were excited by a little more off-street opportunity for people waiting for the bus and walking to and from restrooms or the customer service area, having that not be so, you know, back and forth across the street's really helpful. The other piece of that is, you know, we currently do use, you see on this screen, the cutout that's in front of the Senior Resource Center. They really would like that to be full-time pick-up and drop-off for folks that are accessing their services as well. And so we, you know, we work as well together as we can, but we, if there's an opportunity to allow that space to go back to that type of use, we saw an opportunity to carve out a one side of the street site.
Thanks. That's perfect.
And I guess that was my question on both of these. Are you exiting, is there an exit on the 8th Street?
Not today.
Okay.
Yeah.
It wasn't planned to be. I couldn't tell what this, the two blue lines, if that indicated there might be an exit there, or are you going to circle that?
It does. So under this example, the three buses that kind of are on the top and the right side are needing to enter from a new entrance on 8th Street to access those bus bays. The bus that's interior to the site but on the western side of it would need to exit that way. It could circulate around. But there would need to be a new curb cut there for this type of use and really kind of make it functional for the way large buses need to circulate.
So if you go to the other lot, Lot Nine, would you be exiting into the alley and onto?
That's a good question.
11th Street?
Yeah. So in this case, we are planning on just trying to use entrance and exit from that existing curb cut, with the exception that it's very likely wider. But it would not be, there would not be any vehicle movements off into the alley. Buses would circulate around the island, but in and outs would all happen from a curb cut on Vermont Street is the proposed concept for this. So thanks for that clarification. But there'd be a hard curb edge that would not allow in and out from the alleyway.
So I guess then if you go back to the other lot, is the second exit necessary because you don't have enough space to make the turn? Or is that just easier not to make the turn?
I think future design work will tell if that is true. I think this is to hedge that there might not be enough room for that. So having those two options provide much easier 40-foot bus turning movements. And so I think if there's utility or desire to have fewer curb cuts or fewer entrances and exits, I think that's something that could be, definitely would be further explored in full design work. Just not shown at this time. I guess I'll, it's a good reminder that, you know, the first concepts you all saw of Central Station had a very large exit east of the KU Warehouse Building that we didn't even touch. There was a 300-foot concrete driveway that took us way out to another portion of Bob Billings, because we thought that's what that one would be set up at the time of concept design. And so a reminder that design work changes quite a bit once we get into it. And this is kind of our best guess right now on how it might shake out.
Okay. Thank you.
Adam, with the raised crosswalk at, with the second design option, will there be, what other additional elements would there be there? Could there be there? Are we thinking maybe if that was a proposed area, are we thinking of flash to notify?
Good is probably the right word to use rather than would right now, because I think we'd rely on traffic study, we'd rely on city engineer to help us decide if that's a hawk beacon like you see at the Art Center, if it's rectangular rapid flashing beacons that don't require vehicles to stop for the full period that it's red. I think there's design options for that.
Okay.
I think accessibility-wise, a raised, like a tabletop crossing would be the preferable element at this site. Also would slow down traffic approaching it.
I don't know if you've mentioned it before, but in regards to the one by the, the one by, I believe it was, let me go ahead and hear, Lot Nine, what were the amenities that were near it again? What other services were near it again?
So you've got the Homeless Resource Center directly to the west across the alley. You've got churches on the north, south, and east side. And then Caddy Corner across was D&amp;D Tire, just to orient you to that.
And then the other corresponding one? Were there any other?
So at the other lot?
Yeah.
At the other lot, you've got Senior Resource Center across Vermont Street, Fire Station One is right there, Vermont Street Parking Garage, very close, library, very close, AT&amp;T Building is directly north of it, and then alleyway and businesses to its east.
Okay. Any additional questions? Not seeing any? Thank you, Adam. I'll open it up to public comment. Okay, not seeing any here in the room. Sheri on Zoom?
Jeffrey Hepler?
Hey, y'all. Jeffrey Hepler, 66044. I'm personally leaning towards the 7th and Vermont site. I love both of the designs. I think they're phenomenal. I just, I like the idea of having that centralized kiosk of security and restrooms. I think it's a great opportunity to have public restroom, not just for staff on site, especially if that security kiosk is directly adjacent to it. And I also, I appreciate the pedestrian crossing there. And thank you, Commissioner Sellers, for your question about additional design elements potentially for that. I think that the amenities that are around that particular lot are a better service. And yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Stephen Watts? Stephen Watts?
Hi, thank you. I'd like to provide some very cogent information with respect to this specific matter, but I cannot. It's very difficult to participate in these Zoom participation aspects through the webinar process, as you cannot see people when they're talking, because Ms. Wallace, the communications boss lady of communications, in conjunction with the town staff, don't provide a viewable webinar experience. You find yourself compelled to go from the YouTube video to the Zoom video.
Mr. Watts, can you speak to the item in question, please?
I am speaking to the item, sir. Don't interrupt me, Mr. Littlejohn. Please reclaim my time so I may make my point. Thank you. I'll wait.
We made note of it, sir. You can go ahead and continue.
Thank you. Please don't interrupt me, Mr. Littlejohn. I'm playing by your rules, and I don't understand why you interrupt me after 35 seconds of speaking. Incredible.
I was giving you the opportunity to go ahead and speak to the item in question, sir.
No, sir, you interrupted my train of thought. Thank you for your help. End of discussion. Go fly a kite, Bart.
Okay. All right. Bringing it back for further discussion.
I'd like 700 Block one myself.
Okay.
If we're going to move forward with a, if we have to narrow down a NEPA site, then for me, that one seems to serve the best purpose. And we also get additional amenities for the public, including, you know, a safer way to cross the street, get to the library, and then also provides amenities and places for people to rest in an organized location. So for me, it's an improvement.
Adam, do you need us to go through all three for all of us, or just a general idea?
You know, I think the, so the process of filling out the federal planning worksheet, we won't find a lot of separation with cost. We may find slight differences in operational efficiency, but they're not set up wildly different. So I think, I think we're hoping to understand what, if there's favorable context, you know, the location, if that matters to you all, as far as like what each of the sites is close to. You know, the amenities themselves are all going to be the same. And so I think we're trying to have some context when we come back in December of providing you good, you know, responsive to what you may think about adjacent land uses and just compatibility in that regards, and location as it serves downtown. So comments in that vein really helps us.
Gotcha. All right. I'll go ahead and start off then with that regard. My concerns with the first site, you know, it's a, it's not, is in a commercial district is the other one, but it does have a lot of amenities around it. My concern with the second site is just the traffic, just coming in from the library and the senior center and just the corner itself. It's, you know, I appreciate the crosswalk, but I'd like, you know, a little bit more attention on that. As I said before, the opportunity with the first site is it's near other amenities that are in align with, you know, the folks that might otherwise be in transit. But in the second site also has that compliment, that, you know, it's already near a present site that has been there for too long. It was supposed to be temporary. But, and then, yeah, considering all the factors, I would probably lean a little bit more to the second site than I would the first site, just because I just, I don't know. The layout speaks to me a little bit more, but I'd like to see the designs, so.
You're talking about 7th and Vermont?
Yes.
Is that first and second? Hard following you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. The second site, 7th and Vermont, the one near the library.
Adam, I have a quick question. Back on Lot 14, which is the 7th and Vermont site, Commissioner Finkler, I brought it up with the new entryway out. So then my question is, turning, if we're on 8th, turning onto Vermont, what is that turn going to look like? Is that going to be a more wider turn because of the bus bay being right there? What does that do for the turny lane that's now southbound on Vermont? What does that configuration then looks like, will look like? Because from here, that looks like a very wide turnout for a car coming off a corner.
You know, the way the concepts are laid out, I don't think you lose the turn lane at the intersection. I think you maintain three lanes there, lane in each direction and turn lane. The way the site needs to function, you definitely lose the street parking that's right there adjacent to that lot today. And so I think that accommodates that turn you'd be concerned about coming out. You, you know, further design work would need to be done, but I think that would be the space that you'd carve to make that movement happen.
Okay.
I could go with either one, actually. I do like the crosswalk going across to the library area. But I think both of them, either one of them would work.
I guess I would say I would like the 7th and Vermont one better if you could do it without the two curb cuts. So I'd be interested in that. You know, I do think, you know, not only could you have, you know, the traffic in and off Vermont, you could also keep, you know, some additional parking on the street there. some additional parking on the street there, you know, closer to some of those businesses. So not, don't know if that's possible, but, you know, I, again, I kind of, I mean, both sites, I think, will look pretty good, but when I compare the two, that's, that's one thing that, you know, the Seventh, the Seventh Street one, having the two curb cuts makes it a little less appealing to me. But I'm not saying it's a deal killer, but I guess I'd be interested in, in looking at that. You know, I did look at the, the parking side of it. I mean, it's interesting that you have the, that Seventh Street lot has very high parking usage, where at the same time, the, the garage across the street does not. So on one hand, it's not very far to get to the garage.
Exactly.
So I, I, you know, I do think that's an advantage for the Seventh Street site, that you have a lot of available parking very close, especially if, again, if you have a raised crosswalk where people are just parking in the parking garage and, and using it to access the businesses. On the flip side, I would say the Ninth Street, I mean, the, excuse me, the 111th Street Lot Number Nine seemed to have a little less usage. Clearly, it picked up during lunch, but, you know, otherwise died off pretty quickly. So I, I could see some advantages there. But again, I, I think, I feel good that we got to these two choices because I think they both have pluses.
Adam, for me, I'm leaning more towards Lot Number Nine, just simply because just the additional amenities that would need to be done to make the one, Lot 14, doable. And so looking at utilization as well as just being able to map out that this can be done with mitigating as much as possible as it relates to just the cart, just turnouts and things of that nature. So I don't know, it, it seems a little bit more seamless than 700. I think we've always wanted that to work. And I think with this design and kind of the, the what-ifs, I would hate for us to move forward with something that would come out to be a little bit more trickier for us to, to navigate than with Lot Nine. So that's where my, my vote is, is for Lot Number Nine.
Just to clarify, Adam, we will be seeing designs for both? Is it?
This is the last set of designs you'll see, but the next, at the, the time that you are deciding which lot to move forward into the NEPA process, you know, some of the information you've shared in the last 10 minutes is helpful in filling out that worksheet that will help really select which one seems to have more benefit to do the NEPA study, to enter full design. As it gets into full design, absolutely, I think there's going to be chances through the Connected City Advisory Board for those designs to be reviewed and discussed and for you all to see along the way. So yes, I think down the road, there's, there's plenty of nuance to be worked out.
Okay.
And then, thanks. And then one thing we talked about during your last presentation was the location of the station relative to traffic shutdowns or parades or locations for rerouting and for reconfiguring our routes. The move a couple of blocks south, not a big deal from a route planning situation, or is it better to maintain its current location from how you manage issues related to city activities that might impact the routes? So I want to make sure we don't miss out on that because that was something you mentioned and is important, especially when there's EROPS or some sort of thing going in town that's going to affect the team.
Yeah, there's, there's certainly more, there has been historically more activity for street closures and parades that we've had to navigate near our current site than there has been two blocks south of that. I think we'd be challenged to meet at the Seventh and Vermont, or the Eighth and Vermont corner, I think we'd be challenged to only do one curb cut and help provide opportunities for street closures that the library might be interested in on the 700 block of Vermont. Because if we've got north-facing buses, we need to get them turned around. So, so that, you know, that can come into play. I think we can manage both of them from a, from a parade and event perspective either way. I think the, the one a couple of blocks south probably has a little less impact to us than the one at Eighth and Vermont does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me of that letter we did get from Brad Allen about some opportunities in the street that they'd be interested in. That second curb cut obviously wouldn't allow that also. So I'm not sure I'm going to withdraw my objection, but noted, noted.
Is that enough for you?
It is, yeah. That'll give us good info. I think we can reflect a lot of that when we come back with, with a recommendation and let you all wrestle with it next month.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Could I just make a couple of comments?
Sure.
Sorry, Adam, I put you on the spot.
This is likely Adam's last meeting with us. I think the project will be coming back around December 17th after his last day as our Transit and Parking Director. I've had the privilege of working with Adam for almost five years now. I was part of his recruitment, and it was a national recruitment, and he was clearly our director. He's done phenomenal work and carried this operation to tremendous heights in a very short amount of time. So just wanted to acknowledge him on the record and take that opportunity. So thank you. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you, Brandon.
We were honored to see you on some Connected Cities hearing committees. You're not going too far.
Thank you for that reminder, Brandon. All right, I'll move us on to Item Two. Received informational presentation from the Lawrence Community Shelter and the City of Lawrence Homeless Solutions.
Good evening. My name is Kim Brabbitt, and we should have slides. Yes.
Is she with the city?
Yes, Steve.
Yes, Kim.
She sent the slides.
Okay.
Excuse me, Kim. Who are you with again?
I'm with the Lawrence Community Shelter.
Okay, thanks.
I just see, I just forwarded it just in case you didn't have it.
Oh, we'll be inside, Ellen.
That's all right.
Well, I can just do the first slide. My name is Kimberly Brabbitt. I am the Deputy Director of Lawrence Community Shelter and really excited to be here tonight to kind of go over our programming. Our Executive Director, James Chislam, could not be here. He is on Zoom, but he has an injury and had to stay home. So I get to represent us tonight. Why did that not go forward?
There we go.
What we do, many of you may be already very knowledgeable about Lawrence Community Shelter, but we do provide emergency shelter, care coordination, and housing stabilization. Our service area is Lawrence and Douglas County, and our goal is to reduce chronic homelessness through comprehensive services. This just gives you an idea of our flow. Every guest that comes in to our programs, the first thing we do is an intake packet with every guest, which includes an assessment. And all of that information is entered into HMIS, which is the Homeless Management Information System. Our kind of continuum of programs, our Night by Night Program, our Continuous Stay, The Village, and our Rapid Rehousing, which is embedded in some of our Continuous Stay programs. All of our programs deliver services such as meals. We have three meals a day for both the Continuous Stay and The Village, and two meals a day for our Night by Night Program. We have laundering services, showering services, and place for storage so that people can store, store their things on site. Our Night by Night Program served 593 unduplicated guests, and that was since January. The total number of bed usage has been 18,094, and that is a duplicated number. As you can see, I, I, very interesting to me is to look at the, the number of beds used, which correlate very much with our emergency weather shelter. So we'll talk about that a little bit before. But our staff is working extremely hard to be diligent in collecting data, and I think we've seen that in the progression of numbers because we're already, last month was 2,020 bed usage. Our Night by Night Services, we have two dedicated case managers that meet with guests as they come in for Night by Night. They begin by working with that guest to obtain vital documents such as birth certificates, their ID and social security cards, many of which our guests do not have. And they begin a stability plan. And that is really based on where that person is and what they see is their next step in goals. Our end goal is always stable income and stable housing, but our Night by Night Case Managers really start at the basics with the individuals that come in. The next program that we have is our Continuous Stay Program. This program offers 30 days of continuous stay so that individuals have all-day access to the shelter. They have more intensive case management that meets with them every week, really looking at increased income, employment, and the prospect of moving towards housing within that 30-day time period. Our site was recently renovated so that our 30-day guests have their own bathrooms and laundry facilities, as well as access to a small kitchen area. We served 101 individuals in Continuous Stay since January 2024 to date. Their average length of stay was 92 days. Out of the individuals that were in that program, we had 30% that were permanently housed. Additionally, we had 5% that are temporarily housed, and that could be in health facilities. And so that it's a temporary housing and then to move on to the next stage. A lot of our guests sometimes need long-term health facilities. We also have percentages of those that are in institutions. That's primarily incarceration. And then we have 48% of program transfers and transitional housing. That still keeps them sheltered. So I think the most important number, for me anyway, on this slide, is that only 3.8% return to being unsheltered after being in our Continuous Stay Program. On March 18th, actually, the first day I started with Lawrence Community Shelter, The Village opened. And so this program offers, thank you, offers six months of continuous stay in their own private cabins. This program really includes intensive case management to help guests secure stable income and look towards permanent housing. We provide intensive wraparound services in this program, which means as guests come in, we meet with them, and the first thing we do is start identifying which programs in the community that they're already associated with. A lot of the time, that's going to be the Homeless Resource Team, Burt Nash, and other programs. But we want to be able to build kind of a wraparound those guests so that we all come together and there's no duplication of services and that we are all moving that guest forward and supporting them as they move through the six-month program. Some of our partners include the Homeless Response Team, of course, mental health programming, legal aid, and job support. We've had 109 individuals enrolled in The Village since it opened on March 18th. Our average length of stay has been 76 days or 2.5 months. And we have had people that have lost services. And when looking at those that have actually lost services from The Village, 49% of those are due to violations of expectations that were set in the original contract. The majority of those are weapon violations, drug and alcohol use on-site, or violence on-site. We also, I, I do want to mention that we prioritize individuals that are from reentry, who are individuals fleeing domestic violence, and those who are chronically homeless. Embedded in both our Continuous Stay and our Village program, don't know what I'd do without you tonight, is our Emergency Shelter Grant. Last year, we were awarded $32,029. This has enabled us to house nine individuals in the past five months. That program is wonderful. It allows us to pay down back debt. It allows us to pay application fees, deposits, and rent up to three months. And the case managers are either our Rapid Rehousing Case Managers or they work together in partnership with the Continuous Stay and The Village Case Managers. Our total, looking at our total numbers in our Continuous Stay Programs, both the 90 Day and The Village, we've had 210 individuals who are enrolled in both programs. Out of that, 31% enrolled into secure housing. And when I say secure housing, that is permanent housing. We also have numbers on our transitional program. 20% were unsheltered. And when we say unsheltered, this includes inconsistent night-by-night services. So if they're consistently coming to Night by Night, we consider that still enrolled in one of LCS's continuum of programs. We work very closely with the Homeless Response Team. Got it myself. This program allows us to provide services to our most vulnerable residents. In coordination with them, we are also able to add a respite care for those who are non-Douglas County residents up to three days and so that we can provide services on being able to return them to their original support systems. We've recently begun using our Monarch Village. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it sits right behind the shelter for reentry and for people with high medical needs. And the Homeless Response Team has been wonderful in helping us identify what we can use those units for and how we can best serve our community in using those. We also have a staff member that is on this team, and that's been a blessing because we have direct access to the Homeless Response Team at any time. And you're going to talk about meals, and then I will be back.
Hi, everyone. My name is Megan Lutrell. I work for the Lawrence Community Shelter. I am the Administrative Assistant to James Chislam, who's our Executive Director. One thing I want to talk about, I get to kind of talk about the fun stuff that we're doing. So as we all know, food services are integral, especially when it is a shelter for unhoused. So one thing that we implemented this year is we hired a chef, and his name is Chef Mo, and he is a very important part of our staffing. One thing I can tell you is that he does serve healthy and nutritious meals to our guests, which is so vital and so important for them to have. We are serving up to about 425 meals per day. That is a lot of meals when you think about that. When we look at this in the number per year, it is 65,665 meals a year. So this is, you know, this is something that, when you look at the community, oftentimes we'll see guests and staff eating together, talking to Chef Mo. It really builds a sense of community within our, within our agency and within, for the guests. Another thing that we are going to implement this year with winter shelter is going to be day programming. Something that we have worked very hard with our community partners is to build in this day programming. So as part of our commitment to fostering stability and growth for our guests, we aim to to provide engaging impactful programming that covers a range of topics, including life skills, employment readiness, health and wellness, and creative outlets. So we have collaborated with the Willow Domestic Violence Center, DECA, the Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center, Catholic Charities, and also the University of Kansas. So we're going to be having them come in during the day, typically a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule from, you know, anywhere from nine AM to four PM. And they'll be working with our guests on some of these life skills, career building skills, resume building. We're going to have peer support through DECA, so people who have substance abuse disorder can come in and get that peer support that we all know is extremely important, that face-to-face communication. And we also really want to bridge the gap to services for people. So when they transition out of the shelter, it's really good for them to have that, that transition of care in place and that streamlined services. So, and we also did some memorandums of understanding, so as we know, MOU's also streamline that process as well. Some of the highlights in the transformations, Kim kind of went over a couple of these, but I'll, I'll go over them again. The entire shelter was professionally cleaned from top to bottom. The continuous stay living space was remodeled and freshly painted, and we did paint that. We did take into consideration trauma-informed colors. We upgraded and remodeled restroom facilities by removing tubs and replacing with walk-in showers. We also, since we are a pet-friendly shelter, I don't know if everyone does know that, but we are a pet-friendly shelter, which we do take great pride in. We renovated out, the outdoor area to serve as a dog park. And then we also developed the use of the Monarch units to support individuals with complex medical needs. And I'm going to introduce Karen.
My name is Karen Sibilio. I'm the Director of Finance for LCS. So I want to talk about first is our revenue sources. Majority of our funding comes from the city, which we're incredibly grateful for. The next slide, I'll talk about why we're grateful for that. But the, about eighty-four percent comes from the city, another ten percent comes from the county, and then the remainder come from donations and foundations. Most of our donations come from individuals. And I haven't included emergency solutions grant funding on here because it's on a reimbursement basis. So we get, we get the grant for providing services, but it's on a reimbursement basis. So I didn't include that in here, but it is on my expenditure slide. So here's revenue budget versus funding through the end of September. You'll see that we've gotten majority of our funding again from City of Lawrence. We are under, under our goals for donation and fundraising, which is why we're, again, we're really grateful for the city's funding of the shelter and having that contract to make sure that we can provide services for our community. Expenditure-wise, ninety-three percent of our funds is expended on programmatic, about six percent on administrative. So I feel like this is important to talk about because in terms of funding, we have that four percent that come from donations. I feel like it's a safe bet to say that almost all of that money goes towards groceries and supplies that we use at the shelter to help make sure that we can provide the services Of those programmatic, eighty-one percent of that is payroll. So again, the city is primarily paying for our payroll. We've had extremely high turnover the last several years. Melanie, our Director of HR, is going to be talking about that in her slides. The next two, the next two revenue, revenue, expenditure sources that we spend on our repairs and maintenance, we did make some investments that aren't shown on our profit and loss statement. They're on our balance sheet. So the bathroom renovations would be on there, as well as some of the other higher maintenance things. Safe Harbor's twenty-five hundred dollars, so anything over that amount, we would want to look at putting on our balance sheet rather than our profit-loss. So a lot of the renovations that we did are sitting on our balance sheet. As far as payroll goes, there's about a ninety-ten split of what we're spending programmatically, so ninety percent programmatically, ten percent on admin. That'd be purely administrative roles and programmatic roles. So, so this specific pie graph just encompasses salaries and wages, taxes, and, at least for payroll, anyway, salaries and wages, taxes, and benefits that we provide. Coming into this next year, a new benefit that we'll be providing to attract employees and maintain employee retention is a retirement plan. We do not currently offer one, but one-one, two thousand and twenty-five, that will be included as part of our budget and expenditures. This next slide, I'm showing you administratively what we're spending our money on. So again, payroll's on here, but it's not split out. That's something that I'm looking at doing in this next year, possibly splitting out so that it's easier for our shareholders to see how much money we're spending on our administrative professionals and versus our direct support advocates. Those are the ones, those are the people that are maintaining the shelter, making sure that there's safety at night, that there's adherence to rules, just, just making sure that there's general security surrounding the shelter and that it is a safe place and it continues to be a clean, safe place. So aside from payroll, because I mentioned that was eighty-one percent, here's another pie graph that shows you what's not payroll. And so our next biggest expense would be repairs and maintenance and utilities, followed by groceries. So now that we are offering three meals per day for continuous stay residents and our, or guests, we should say, groceries has gone up. We prioritize that as our focus. James says that well-fit individuals are happier individuals, makes for a safer shelter. So here's our programmatic budget. I mentioned about emergency solutions grant. That's in our direct assistance section here, so that would be housing assistance, rental assistance, utility assistance, and security deposits. In some cases, it's rental arrears. So we might have a guest that they, they had housing and lost it because they were behind on their rent, and so whatever allows them to get back into more permanent housing, we would be able to make that possible for them. So the emergency solutions grant has been used for that. The same for utility assistance, we have some of that. And then going down into our facility, you'll see repairs, maintenance, groceries, and then utilities. Again, this is something that my, one of my goals in this next year is to kind of clean up, and that way it's more easy to understand than it is currently. Now I'll pass it off to Melanie.
Melanie Valdez, I am the Director of HR and Payroll at Lawrence Community Shelter. And I'm not going to get so detailed into the numbers since we've heard a lot of that information from the other speakers, but I will just talk about some notable changes that we've had and how it has impacted the agency from an HR perspective. You can go to the next slide. Is there, where's it at? Do I have one?
There it is.
Is it just this? Okay, I didn't see. There we go. All right. So of course, we entered into an enhanced partnership with the City of Lawrence and received significant increase in funding. And we also expanded our services and programs, which then allowed for a growth in the numbers of individuals served by our agency. And we also experienced the unionization of our employees. And because of all these changes, we have had a significant impact in the growth of the agency. We have increased staffing needs to meet the demands of the services we're providing. We have a need for enhanced and refined policies and procedures to align with organizational growth. We, the union is promoting a strengthened workforce, and we also must focus on compliance with the evolving regulatory requirements that we will be under. In the next few slides, I just created some visuals to show over time how we have scaled our staffing structure to meet the needs of the growth and expansion of services that we have. So the first slide will be, show a shift in how we have adapted the staffing and structure and as far as roles that we have. And I'll also, also show that we have an improvement in staffing efficiency and also some evidence of that we have developed a stronger and more engaged workforce. So with this first chart, the very lightest blue is like the executive team, the leadership at LCS, and the, the medium blue is the, like, middle management and the peripheral support roles, like case managers, and the darker blue are the frontline workers. So back in two thousand and twenty-one, you will see that that dark blue, the frontline workers, is very low. And the frontline work is really where the mission is. It's where the services are provided when these other roles are really supporting and making, putting everything in place to keep the agency open. So as you see over time, you'll see that that frontline column starts to shift as the kind of middle management and case management comes down, and then you'll see it all balance out. And then in two thousand and twenty-four, you'll see that jump in the frontline workers, and that is to specifically support the increase in services and the number of individuals we're serving daily. And this area chart shows overtime from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-four, the staffing ratio to person served and that individual served is a daily average compared to the average number of staff that we had employed. So again, you will see in two thousand and twenty-one, there was almost one staff per one person served. And a lot of that is because we have kind of the fixed base of positions that we had to have in place just to be open as a business. And that was during the pandemic, and we had a lot of other factors relating to that. But you will see over time that the staffing did increase, but the individuals we served increased at a greater rate. So that really shows that we are having an improved staffing efficiency as we continue to develop our structure and provide more services. We did have improved retention of our staff, and if you look at turnover, it has decreased significantly. And actually, the turnover for our industry, this actually, twelve percent was good. You could see anywhere from twenty to forty percent turnover rate in a direct support, social service-type industry. So we were actually doing okay, but what you see is that turnover has continued to decrease. And I think that is in part by having the partnerships that we have, the additional support, the increase in funding that took a lot of pressure off of us as an agency just trying to get by, and the unionization of the employees and being more invested. You will see that length of service had a big jump to two thousand and four, and this was based off of kind of end of, end of the year averages for the previous years and then where we're at today with our current staff. So we are not only seeing less turnover, but people are staying longer. Now with all this growth, growth, we do have a lot of challenges that we're facing that we did not experience before. And part of that is that we have an increased administrative and regulatory requirements. For two thousand and twenty-five, we're going to qualify as an ALE, and we've never qualified as that before. So we will have higher requirements as far as reporting and what we offer to our staff and classification of employee rules and all sorts of things that'll apply that we didn't have to report on in the past. We do need more robust systems to manage the compliance of all of these things and all of the additional complexities that we're facing. And then we also just have to look ahead and make sure that we're focusing our efforts on ensuring ongoing stabilization so we can continue to meet the community, community So looking ahead at all these requirements that we're facing and the growth that we've had, and wanting to make sure that we are instilling confidence in the stakeholders and the community, we had to put some things in place to make sure that we were able to do things in compliance with requirements and also be transparent and basically make everything in a, in a system that we can maintain. So we are entering into a partnership with Accent HR Solutions, which is a PEO, and they will basically help manage and support almost all of the HR processes, payroll, onboarding, training, and helping engage with our staff and answer questions and support them with these, these things. And we, they will also help us make sure that we are meeting all regulatory requirements, the new reporting requirements, tax requirements, everything that's changing right now for us. They will help us support or help us develop new policies and procedures, employee handbooks. They have attorneys that can help make sure that we are meeting requirements within our policies. And also with the unionization, we have to consider that as well. They'll also provide our benefits and our employee assistance program, retirement plan. It'll all be through them, so everything will be integrated and easy to access. And they also help us with risk management and workplace safety. They would also be the providers of our workers' compensation.
Um, oh, sorry, go ahead. Can we keep any extra talking down to a minute?
So as we move forward, we are very excited that we are expanding our capacity from one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and seventy-eight. That's the, with addition to the twenty-four pallets that we are putting out back, that will be our night-by-night shelter, and we are creating a thirty-day emergency shelter indoors. Again, that will be a continuous stay program, and it will offer short-term stays up to thirty days, focusing on immediate needs and stabilization. The benefits of this is it will clear, provide a clear framework for guests while connecting them to essential services such as employment services and healthcare. We also are in the process of doing some practice runs for winter emergency shelter. We started last Sunday, but we have began and will keep going with no Sunday exits. The buses don't run on Sundays, it's hard for our individuals to leave and come back, so we So we will be offering day programming during those times and there will be no longer a need for them to exit on Sundays. The policy started, it's been somewhat stress-free. I won't say it was the perfect Sunday, but we are working up to that. This policy ensures that guests are provided reduced stress by not worrying where, how and where they're going to get somewhere while they're outside from 7:00 in the morning until they check back in at 7:00 at night. And it fosters an atmosphere for conducive planning and recovery. We've also extended our times of exit. And this, I'm, I have talked to my nighttime staff and they are very pleased with this. No longer are guests required to leave by 7:00 AM, but we've extended that to 8:00 AM. One of the things that we found is that when guests wake up at 6:00 AM and they're supposed to leave by 7:00, that it's a mad dash at the end and we're not able to appropriately or really attend to making sure everybody's getting their showers or getting their laundry finished. So it gives them a little bit more time. We also now are serving hot breakfast and so that gives us a little bit more time for that. So staff has been pleased, I think our resident, our guests have been really pleased with that change as well. And with the, we are going to work on extending our restroom facilities, which is a very popular move. Right now, we just do not have enough showers to serve everyone that we need to serve without limiting the shower times to very 20 minutes and then adhering to that, which makes it very difficult. So I'm excited about being able to add some expansion of restrooms and shower areas. This really will impact dignity. It reduces our waiting time and it improves overall sanitation. We also, Megan talked a little bit about enhanced services for winter shelter. That will continue even after emergency shelter is over. So we will be offering day programming at the shelter. Those things consist of having our community partners come in on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and on Tuesday, Thursday, looking primarily at things that will help people with self-sufficiency once they move into permanent housing. Those things being anything from hygiene to housekeeping, to keeping your vital documents in order and where to keep those to keep them safe. Additionally, we have talked about providing information on how to keep your medical records or your medical contacts in order so that if something happened to one of our guests and they're living alone and someone comes in and needs to take them somewhere, they have all of that in order. And I think that's not something that we always think about, but it's something that is very important to those that we serve. So excited about the future. I think we're growing quickly. I've seen great growth in our staff. Our case management team is awesome and we have some of the best direct service providers that I've worked with. And so I've had a pleasure of being here and look forward to the next year. Do you have any questions? I know James is on Zoom and Misty's here, so.
Any questions?
Got a couple.
Okay. Question, Larson?
So on your housing, the Rapid Re-Housing Program, that ESG, you had nine individuals get into secure housing. Are you seeing other programs where some of your clients are being housed or is this pretty much what you've got?
Well, this is the money that we have received for housing. And it's nine individuals with that amount of money, I kind of, it doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're looking at the back debt that some of our folks have, it really has been substantial in helping them move to permanent housing and being able to, you know, carry that on long-term. But we have, we always partner with Burton Ash and with the city to also provide other housing options so that we're able to move people into permanent housing and not just depend on that Emergency Solutions Grant because it is a small amount of money.
Do you track those numbers that you get folks housed through like other services like Burton Ash? Do you track that?
Yes, we do.
Those numbers?
Yes, we do.
Do you know what you're doing up to date for this year?
As far as?
How, actual housed individuals through other programs like Burton Ash?
I think, I don't know that we can necessarily divide it out.
Yeah, we can. The last time I checked, it was around 52 for the shelter, around 55 for Burton Ash, around 20 for the homeless response.
And some of that's connections between case management and housing. So it's kind of blended services, which is something that I think all of our individuals need.
Yeah, appreciate that very much. I have one more question about finances. The, the money you're getting from donations, are you actively pursuing new donations, new avenues of, of revenue with the idea of building that and becoming more self-sustaining?
We have been. We've just completed our winter appeal. Now we have a Director of Community Engagement that's been working on, with the board, on increasing our activities related to gathering more donations specifically for LCS.
All right, thank you.
A couple of questions. Just to be clear, the, the new 30-day emergency shelter, that's going to be after you have the pallet village up and do the night by night?
Simultaneously, I believe.
The additional pallet?
Yes.
You could, you'll move the night to night to that, then have an additional?
We will. So the warehouse that we're using currently for our night by night services will be transformed into our 30-day program. We're looking at purchasing some step-up beds to add some more privacy to that space, but that will then become our 30-day program. And we'll have one dedicated case manager working with our 30-day program and one dedicated case manager working with our night by night.
And what approximately, how many people do you think can be in the 30-day program?
I'm not, we will stay at 125, so I'm guessing probably around 40, 30 to 40 is what we're anticipating to start. And, you know, we'll have to look at that as it grows and the capacity of that case manager and what, and kind of what we're doing there.
Okay. Appreciate you providing the statistics on, you know, some of the locations. And I know the village hasn't been open that long and maybe that's the answer, but obviously your outcomes are better out of your continuous stay program than they are out of the village? Is there, have you analyzed what the causes of that are?
Well, I think there's several. I think it was a new project and so it's, we've had a lot of lessons learned from the village. We also are taking a lot of people directly from the streets into the village as some of the camp, encampments close. And I think that that's been a, a big transition for some of them and giving them time and, you know, space to really be indoors and in their own space. I think that's determined some of our outcomes there. We have added an additional case manager. So I think when we first started, our emphasis was more on kind of operations and we focused that and kind of put that with case management. So the addition of that extra case manager, I think will really help us be able to provide the services that our individuals need and that we owe them and coordinating services with other agencies instead of kind of us working in a silo.
Thank you.
Do you have other things about the village?
Real quick. So for breaking it down, night by night, continuous stay in the village, how many case workers do you have for each one? What are their?
I have two right now for night by night. We also have one for our continuous stay program. We've now added two, so we have two more for the village and we have one for Rapid Re-Housing that works in conjunction with the other program. So I have six case managers currently.
So as of right now, what's their rolling average of caseloads that they currently have?
Our continuous stay can usually runs about 24. We're trying to get it up to 30 to four, and even 40 for our 30-day program. Now with the village, we average between, we try to keep the, the census at a, at 50, but we have some moving out and others moving in. So that's about 25 per caseload at the village, 20 to 25. And night by night, that's overwhelming. We have two for sometimes 76 people in night by night. I think our case managers are doing an excellent job along with our direct service advocates in collecting the intake data, the assessment data, and getting all of that into HMIS. We do schedule appointments starting at 2:00 and our case managers are there until 10:00. We have one case manager that goes to the Homeless Resource Center on Tuesdays so that we can catch up with some of our night by night individuals at that location as well. I would like to see us do that more often and I think we'll be able to as we expand into our 30-day program so that we're able to catch some of our night by nights when they're in the community. I think it's, it makes it a little hard when they schedule an appointment for the next day at 11:00 if we're just doing daytime hours and then they have to leave and come back. So I think we'll see outcomes increase on the amount of case management that we can actually provide for our night by night folks. And that depends on engagement.
So then what's your, your TAT, your turnaround time as far as intake assessment and entering that data into HMIS?
We tried to, I want to see the first case management appointment start. We do intake as soon as they come in. So intake and a brief assessment as soon as they come in. They do the CES assessment, which is really important to be able to put them into the CLARITY system and helps us with HMIS tracking. But to meet with a case manager, it's approximately two weeks is kind of my point in which I would like to see them. If they're coming consistently, they need to have made contact with a, a case manager. In my experience, best practice is within three to four days. We're not there yet. We don't have the capability of being there yet, although we're striving every day to get there. So.
And so then on the continuous stay, as you have individuals who are rolling off into permanent housing, what does that handoff look like? Are they still maintaining contact with the case manager?
We do, we do. We do home visits. That's required by ESG. It's best practice. We need to support our individuals as they move out. I have always said I've done case management in the past. Sometimes that's the hardest part, you know? Learning and being able to live alone and be in your own space and not surrounded by the community that you once, once had because they are in communities now. And so moving into permanent housing, it's important that they stay connected with us. We always invite them to come back. They can eat with our guests at any point in time and are welcome back at the shelter to visit. And I think when they do that, it really creates good role models and peer mentors for those that are still striving towards making progress towards permanent housing. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any further questions? All right. With that, I'll open it up to, thank you, Misty. Oh, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just going to piggyback on her since she was talking about winter emergency shelter and just briefly talk about where we're at with overflows. We currently have identified four other sites for overflow. We have a Jesus Community Church of the Nazarene, First United Methodist Church, University, Community Church of Christ. And then we have a collaboration with David Hawley and Aaron Thacker of Udora that they're going to, in partnership with United Way, they're going to run an operation there for us as well. This week, we are wrapping up delivering all the supplies that we're offering to the individual agencies that are doing this for us. Cotton bedding, some warm clothing, hygiene items, medical supplies, cleaning supplies. And we wrote standard operating procedure manuals for these shelters. This year, we're going to do things a little bit differently. John Crable of FUMC is going to be the, the hub, the check-in point for individuals experiencing homelessness. Last year, we had it at LCS, so people would find a way out there and then find out that they were full. So we're going to switch it and so people don't have to go clear out to the shelter, find out they're full and then have to go to an overflow. And John came to me with that idea and I think it's a wonderful idea, so we're going to move forward with that. Transportation, we have covered. We've been working with our fleet manager, Robert Aaron. He's going to provide a van for us to use to transport people. We have been training our individuals within these organizations and volunteers and staff on de-escalation, mental health, first aid, harm reduction and diversion. Our diversion policy, volunteer coordination is going to be with United Way again this year. Staffing, we have a portion of our budget set aside for PR and staff as needed, so we have somebody on each site at each shift. Excited to welcome some of our candidates last year that were really helpful back this year on, they're on standby for us. Activation will happen when Douglas County lets us know that there's going to be an incident and then the homeless response team will be present at these sites too to, to connect people to services.
You talk about the winter, winter sheltering.
This overflow.
For winter?
Yeah.
All right. No additional questions? All right.
Thank you, thank you, Misty.
Thank you. Open it up to public comment.
Been a few weeks. Ms. Larson, you asked a question about funding and about what they're doing for funding. If you take a look at page 16, you'll find out what they're doing for funding. Now, here's the problem. We've had a lot of anti-homeless people come in here and say, well, if you just give them things, they'll just be lazy and they'll just expect more. Just give it to them, they're just going to expect you to just keep giving it to them. Well, if you take a look here, they didn't even budget events and fundraisers. Fucking hypocrites, man. That's the first point. So there's your homeless laziness. HUD, if you notice on the HUD funding for the grants down below on page 16, you'll notice that HUD funding is starting to dry up. And the reason that's happening is because HUD is making a move toward a Housing First program. They're funding things for more housing initiatives rather than shelter initiatives. If you guys would get on board with a judge here in town, maybe you can go visit with Sally Pecorni and find out her thoughts on the Housing First options. She does run the drug court here in town and she has become a believer in Housing First. I don't like it when budget people come in here and say the numbers aren't here because they report that $39,000 for ESG that housed nine people. It doesn't show up on here, but they, they say it's mixed up in other places. That's not the way these budget forms should be brought to you. They should be brought to you in their complete form so that you can see the damn numbers and work with them. Mike, you're a numbers guy, you know this. Whoever did the budget hasn't got a clue. Take a look at page 18 and let's look at line 55140, loan interest. 2022, they had actuals of 6,400, 2023, 8,200. For some reason, some dumbass budgeted 5,600 in 2024 and they just blew that away because they've spent damn near $10,000 already. That's not budgeting, okay? That's not how you do budgeting. You use your past performance to project your future numbers and you damn sure knew how much you borrowed. So you knew what your interest payments were going to be. This is lazy work. This is sloppy, as a judge called an attorney's work in Elk County recently. This is sloppy work. Let's go to page 20. While the feds in reality are reducing the shelter funding and going to the Housing First model, Lawrence instead, co-opted by these people over here, are moving more money into shelter where it's being pilfered a little bit by Craig and wasted by people who think that if you're not being raped right now, everything's cool.
All right. Sherry, any additional public comment on Zoom?
Yes, there are some there.
Julie Jones.
Hi, Julie Jones, 66047. I have been following the monthly board meetings. And those numbers that they presented come from the accountant that is at the board meetings monthly. So I'm not sure exact, I'm not understanding where the employee is getting those numbers because those are the same numbers that the accountant is providing. And now she's focused on is if you spent more this month than what's projected, then why? And then they move on. That's what I see as the John Q. Public. I'm out talking to the homeless just because I see the same people all the time on the streets. I wondered if there is random drug testing going on with the employees at LCS because I'm being told that they're going out to their vehicles and participating in illegal drugs and then coming back in the shelter. And what the residents are complaining about is we get kicked out, but they get to come back in. So that's a thought for you guys to think about. And then the last thing I want to bring up is why is there a mandatory contract for the residents before they enter the pallet village or before they enter LCS? They must sign this contract that states they cannot speak to media about what's going on. I don't understand that. I get it that they might be viewed because they might be spaced out on drugs. I get that. My brother was a drug addict. But at the same time, to force them to sign something before they can receive services, that's ludicrous and crazy. That's a condition when they should have the right to go in there freely. That's all I got. Thank you. Oh, I do have one more. 61. 61 was the last count that you asked them how many? 61. Sorry, that's all I got.
Stephen Watts.
Now, thank you for this opportunity after, well, a long time in terms of, not with respect to this opportunity, but so many times with respect to homelessness and people with nowhere to live. It's absolutely incredible in the greatest of all lands. And yet here we are. Is this august body beginning to understand that the utilization of not-for-profits to do a government service is not working? We continue to pour millions of dollars into programs which in that final analysis end up paying staff first and foremost and delivering a service second, a distant second. I know these people are well-intentioned and good-hearted. I got to scratch my head though and, hey, was that lady that was up in here just earlier, has she ever interviewed personally any of the clients coming into our town homeless shelter? And you see, I can't say it's our homeless shelter because it's owned by a not-for-profit. My suggestion is our money, town-wise, needs to be focused on City of Lawrence-owned public housing. City of Lawrence-owned and controlled public housing. We don't hear all of this kind of caterwallering going on with respect to the Douglas County Lawrence, Kansas Housing Authority. It works. This stuff. Sending money off to the not-for-profits isn't working. It's not going to work. It's not a solution. It is an aspect of the solution, but a small one. The larger aspect of the solution centers around our community owning and controlling public housing for our people in this town. We can stop all of this nonsense that goes on if we could only recognize it's okay to move forward and say, yeah, we've got this as an option. That is to say, these not-for-profits who do a whole lot of hand-wringing and think they're going to fix people, they're not going to fix them. They're just people who are adapting to a society where money is king. And it's just not going to work for them. So, and their numbers are going to increase. The idea that you're going to eliminate homeless.
Mr. Watts, that's time.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the comments, Mayor.
Okay. Bringing it back to us for any further discussion?
Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for your work and, you know, lots of change in one year. I can't wait to see where you're at to you from now.
Yep, I concur. Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. I appreciate all of your hard, all of your hard work. All right. They'll move us on. We're in the home stretch. Item H, commission items? Any commission items? Commissioner Sellers, it looks?
Well, I mean, I had a question I was going to ask the staff at LCS, but I didn't get that opportunity, so. My question will have to wait till next week after I have some information, or at least the first of December, so.
Okay. All right. Item two, future agenda items, review future agenda items? Anything coming up? Not seeing anything? All right, I'll move us on.
Hold on.
Okay.
So when are we going to get the email from Tony about our legislative priorities? I asked about that two, three weeks ago.
She said it would be, I think she said probably the last meeting in December, so I'll get that added. I'm sorry. I don't, I just didn't have a definite date from her yet, but I think she's planning on either the 10th or the 17th.
I don't see that we've put on there yet, the park, permit parking ordinance that we're going to work on.
Yep, I'll put that on too.
Thank you.
Anything in addition? Okay. All right. And I'll move us on to the city manager's report. Item I.
Thanks, Mayor. The utility billing report's on there. And then the other item is a follow-up on the request to review, have the city attorney review the draft bylaws by Explorer Lawrence.
Any questions regarding city manager's report?
Sorry, I was looking to see if Kim was on from Explorer Lawrence. But I don't see her. So I'll just yield my comments since she's not on.
Okay. All right, I'm not seeing anything. So this is a public comment item. I will open it up for public comment. Not seeing any in the room? Sherry on Zoom?
Stephen Watts.
All right. Have I told you guys how much the webinar process sucks? Because I could do that some more. I thought I'd already made a point and I'll keep trying to do it. But what I'm calling about, what I'm talking about now is the city manager report with respect to the utility billing. And I got to say, Ms. Webb does a fantastic job in providing a product which allows us to see what our water usage is per hour. It takes a little bit of doing to figure out how to get into the account and do this and that, but it is very helpful. So that's a big, I'm going to say it now because it's a big ass plus. Yes, it is. However, when we look at that report, only 71.2% of the calls coming in for assistance are acted upon. What happens with the other calls? What does that mean that 71.2% are acted upon? So what does that mean? Well, let me add now. I mean, I'm just a public school educated guy now. Let me figure it out. 78.8%? No. I'm struggling with the math. 28% and then some. Where are those calls? I'm just curious. I mean, what happens with them? I'm sure some of them are dumped or negated or just done away with, but why are there almost 30% of the calls not handled? Thank you.
Okay. Bringing it back to us, I guess. Greg, would, is there anybody to speak to? I'm kind of curious about that, that the remainder of those calls, what happens to them or where do they go?
Yeah, they're largely disconnects, whether they went online or more likely they just got tired of waiting or decided to call back at another time. So I, I'm not deep in knowledge on that, but that's my general understanding of that.
Okay. All right. I will move us on to item J, commission calendar. Anything on the calendar you want to talk about? All right, I'm not seeing anything. I'm moving us on. Okay. Item K, the live broadcast ends. I'll give enough time for people to go ahead and exit if they want to exit before I let us go to the public comment.